Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council April 12th, 2018 meeting. Vice Mayor Madeline Scales Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads and just let our minds be calm and concentrate on nothing but you, Lord, we come to you as humble as we know how, Lord, just to say thank you. Lord, you're awesome, and you're God, you're God all by yourself, and you don't need any help on anything, and we thank you for that, Lord. Lord, we ask you to forgive us of our sins, seen and unseen, known and unknown, and, Lord, there were people who did not wake up this morning, Lord. There were people that woke up this morning that are not here right now. So, Lord, we thank you for these golden moments, this moment right here, right now, Lord. And, Lord, I know that I have shorter days ahead of me than I have behind me, and I just thank you, Lord. I cannot thank you enough for blessing me to live to see my beautiful granddaughter, Mariah, Lord. I thank you for her, Lord, and I ask that she, you allow her with guidance to grow up in the fear of you, and I ask that you continue to allow me to be a good example before her. And, Lord, thank you and bless special covering over our police and our fire department employees who allow us, Lord, to just live in safety. When we go in our homes, we are safe; when we're on the road, we feel safe; and when we lay down to sleep, we are safe, Lord. We thank you for that. And, Lord, I ask that you bless each and every citizen in our great state, in our great city, Lord. And, Lord, we do have a great city. With all the discord and just everything going on around us, Lord, you come down and you show favor on our great city, Lord. You showed favor when racial tensions were rising. You blessed us to have a mayor with an insight to bring our spiritual leaders together and our department heads and heads all over the city to come together to say, "No, not here, not in Murfreesboro." Lord, you showed favor when the meteorologists say, "Take cover," when we hear the sirens all over our city, and we take cover, and then you allow the storms to just pass over us, and you say to the storms, "Peace." That's nothing but your favor, Lord. And, Lord, I pray that one day we won't have all of this division, we won't have the racial division, we won't have the political division in our country, because when the trumpet sounds, if I'm dead, I want to rise. If I'm here, I want to get caught up with you, Lord, and I want you to show me favor. Lord, in my life and in everyone's life, there's a season, and I thank you so much for allowing me to serve your people for eight years. And, Lord, if my season is up, I'm good. If you still have work for me to do for the citizens here in Murfreesboro, give me the physical and spiritual help that I'll need, Lord. And, Lord, as we get ready to make decisions, I ask, Lord, that you give me, embarking me, the peace and the understanding, and as all of us make decisions tonight, and not only tonight, Lord, in each and every decision that we make for our citizens in our city, we ask that you move into the midst of us and give us directions. Lord, this is my prayer that I asked in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few ceremonial items tonight. I do want to make a quick note that Chief Fokes is sitting tonight. He's in his month of our acting, or, excuse me, assistant city manager, so he's, I want to say, you're interning, right?
He's interning.
Like Butch Jones in Alabama, he's interning?
He forgot to enter.
Okay. The reason I say that, this Saturday night at 6:00, we have our second annual Guns and Hoses Basketball Tournament, or Basketball Game, between our police department and our fire department, and that's at Middle Tennessee Christian. Coach Nick McDevitt, the new basketball coach, is going to be there to have the honorary toss, or the first start of the game, so, and I'm going to be one of the referees, and I can guarantee you that Coach Fokes will get a technical like he did last year, so that's one thing I can guarantee. But come out, it's supporting a worthy cause. Chief, do you have anything?
I'm looking forward to the beginning of the fundraiser for Relate the Lives before you have done it.
Okay. All right, and I want to ask, I think Sarah Callender's here with Special Kids, I think she has a presentation that she wants to make, so I'm going to come down to the podium and then have a couple other things to...
On behalf of Special Kids, we wanted to thank the city and the city council. We're honoring you with the Dick Klineo Lifetime Giving Award for 2017 for your support of Special Kids through the grant process. We, I have with me Mica and her daughter Quinn, who's eight, and Quinn comes to Special Kids, and she's come to Camp Ability for three years, and that's what the grant goes towards, is to help children in our county have a camp to participate in like their peers. So, thank you all very much.
Can we get a picture?
Sure.
You know, before we get into the ceremonial portion, Sarah, I think we should be giving you the award for what Special Kids has done in this community for, I know, over 20-plus years, correct? Yeah, 20 years this year. So, the stories that we continually hear, not only of what y'all do in Murfreesboro, but what you do for the residents of Rutherford County and many surrounding counties, really epitomizes who we are in Murfreesboro. And I was telling this story yesterday that being part of the Miracle Field and the partnership that we have with Special Kids at the Miracle Field, there are things in government that sometimes I can look and say, "Man, we could have done better there," but being part of that Special Kids organization in the Miracle Field, it's one of those things you look and you're like, "If we got that one right." So, thank y'all for what you do and what you continue to do in Murfreesboro. All right, we have another special guest. Chief, do you want to come up and help present this award? Ivan? Is Ivan here?
I want to make sure I say y'all's name right. Tell me your last name.
Merzina.
Merzina, okay. So, folks, this is Ivan Merzina. Ivan is the son of Mark and Pamela Merzina, and so it's my pleasure tonight to be able to give you an official proclamation from the office of the mayor. Ivan was diagnosed with cerebral palsy at the age of three. He does not let his condition stop his passion for firefighting, and whereas Ivan is one of the biggest fans of the Murfreesboro Fire Rescue Department, he is very smart and amazes all with whom he comes in contact. He has an amazing knowledge of the alarm and sprinkler systems used at the fire stations, and whereas he frequently visits Fire Station 9, where the crew ran the 2016 Special Kids Race with him, it would make Ivan very happy to be an honorary fire marshal. So, it's my pleasure tonight, on behalf of the city council, to be able to proclaim on April 16th, 2018, that Ivan Merzina is a fire marshal of the Murfreesboro Fire Rescue Department, and I encourage all the citizens to join him in this recognition. Can we get somebody to take your, take your photo? Yeah. Hey, Jeff, are you not taking a picture? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Wait, we got the cer- we had our painting. Oh, yeah.
Are you sure I should do?
Yeah.
How about that?
Thank you. All right. Wait, we got the cer- we had our painting. Oh, yeah.
How about that?
Thank you so much. We're very proud of you, Ivan. Thank you. Thank y'all. All right. All right, last but not least, first of all, how cool is that?
That's cool.
Ivan, we're very proud of you. Tonight, we've got several ladies with our women's club here in Murfreesboro. So, Diane Summer, if you'd come up. Diane's the president of our club, and then Rebecca, Rebecca, if you want to come up. Susan, y'all all know Ms. Susan Young, who's been a member for many years, and Jane, come on up as well. Yeah. State of Tennessee and purchased property located at 221 East College Street. The first meeting held at its new building was January 3rd, 1917. Whereas over 2,000 books belong to the Murfreesboro Library Association are located at the Women's Club Building, which offered the first public lending library in Rutherford County until Lineball Public Library was formed in 1948. And whereas the Women's Club Building was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1985, the Association for the Preservation of Tennessee Antiquities also recognizes the Basket Women's Club Building, and whereas the Women's Club of Murfreesboro celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2016, the Women's Club of Murfreesboro has embarked on a major historic preservation effort in its building. The immediate focus includes replacement of the roof and heating system, upgrade of electrical systems, and repair of interior damage. Future plans will focus on the historical appearance of the house and the grounds. Now, therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do proclaim April 12th, 2018, as a day to recognize the Women's Club of Murfreesboro and encourage all citizens to join in this recognition. I wanted to ask them to come, because they have a very special event that's coming up that I think the residents of Murfreesboro would love to hear about.
We have, coming up, May is National Preservation Month, and in honor of that, we are doing a fundraiser, and it is going to be at the new Dallas and Jane Restaurant over on Northfield Boulevard, and we would love for you or anyone to attend, and it is to raise funds to restore and preserve our house. We love our house, and we want it to stand, it has stood since 1856. It's 162 years old, so we would love for it to stand another 100 years, so please join us. Thank you.
You have a number of items that are on our consent agenda. Are there any things that need to be added or removed? Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move into minutes. You have the minutes of the March 15th, 2018 regular meeting and the March 22nd, 2018 regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ10 to amend approximately 28.18 acres in the planned residential development PRD district located along Veterans Parkway and St. Andrews Drive, Kimbrel Woods PRD.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ11 to rezone an area along City View Drive to College and University CU District.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Wright and Mr. Shackleton. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ12, amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A Zoning Section 13 Plan Development Regulations, Section 19 Residential Districts, Section 21 Commercial Districts, Chart 1 and Chart 1 End Notes, uses permitted by zoning district pertaining to multifamily housing.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Moving to first reading, you have a letter from the Chief of Police, ordinance 18019, amending Chapter 2 Administration, adding Section 218. Chief Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This evening, I respectfully request that you adopt ordinance 18019, which will authorize the city to accept proceeds from the sale of properties seized pursuant to Tennessee Code 3911701. The use of these funds will be limited to law enforcement purposes. State law requires that before any municipality can receive a share of any forfeited funds, that the governing body by ordinance or resolution will need to complete the following. Ratify Title 39, Chapter 11, Part 7 of the Tennessee Code, authorizing a municipality to receive such funds and state how the funds are to be distributed. The proposed ordinance meets these requirements and specifically designates that funds received are to be used for law enforcement purposes. Five percent of the funds are to be transferred to the office of the district attorney, which will aid in providing resources for local law enforcement efforts. The forfeit procedure in receiving these funds will be distinct from the procedures authorized for violations of Tennessee drug laws. At this time, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll need to consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18019, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 2 Administration, by adding a new Section 218, authorizing the city to accept proceeds of the sale of properties seized and forfeited pursuant to Tennessee Code Section 3911701, and limiting the use of such funds for law enforcement purposes. Any questions for Chief?
39, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, Chief Fokes wanted me to ask who won the inaugural game last year, the basketball game. What's that? Okay, all right. All right, we'll move to new business. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH14, adopted by the city council on March 15th, 2018, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 1.6 acres along Medical Center Parkway from single-family residential RS15 District and Gateway Design Overlay GDO4 District to mixed-use MU District and Gateway Design Overlay 3 GDO3 District. One-Nine Investments MCP is the applicant. Notice that said public hearing was published in the March 27th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application that we've received to rezone property located along the north side of Medical Center Parkway from its current single-family residential district, or RS15, to mixed-use MU District. And you can see that property identified with a hatch in the call-out bubble called Area. The area on the map that's shaded yellow is currently located in Gateway Design Overlay District, Sub-District 4. Across the street, the purple or blue area, depending on what screen you're looking at, is GDO1, and adjacent to the property on the western side, the lighter color, the lighter blue, is the GDO3. In addition to requesting to change the base zone from RS15 to mixed-use district, the request is also to change the overlay zone from GDO4 to GDO3, and a big part of that request comes from city staff. This is a property that's owned by the city of Murfreesboro, and we have a contract to sell it to One-Nine Investments, MCP, who wishes to develop it with some offices, various types, I believe, medical and professional offices. There's a contract, of course, for them to purchase this property, and part of the contract stipulates the rezoning. The GDO3 properties are those that are city-owned, and they have private restrictions on them, where this, there's a DRC commission that reviews the plans and the architecture for these buildings, in addition to what planning commission will do at initial design review and final design review. We, of course, haven't seen the plans for this, but there have been concepts demonstrating that an office can fit here. I did want to point out that the 2035 future land use map does recommend redevelopment of an area that does include this parcel. It's called the West College Street Mixed Use Redevelopment Program, and it's immediately west of the Stones River. You can see that these parcels were identified in the plan as an opportunity to have different uses, a mixed type use here. If you go look, you can see some of the development's quite old, and we believe that it's a good opportunity to do that. This rezoning request is consistent with that, so it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. The planning commission held a public hearing on the evening of March 7th. Five members were present. All five members recommend to you that you approve this zoning change request. I'd be glad to answer any questions either before or after your public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Before we open the public hearing, I know we have a lot of people who are wanting to speak on different public hearings tonight. We have a few things to ask when you come to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. If you have any questions, if you'll ask those to the city council, we will get, I'll make a list of all the questions, and we have help with that. I will get all the questions answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing individual, you'll have three minutes. With that, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Jeff Dismuks, 4604 Blackman Road. First, I want to talk about my family's history in the Blackman community, to know where I'm coming from. In 1787, my three great-grandfather...
Mr. Dismuks, this is about, this is about the property on Medical Center Parkway?
Oh, excuse me.
No, 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 I didn't, we want to hear from you, but let's get to that other's...
I thought you...
No, 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 you're fine, no problem at all. And these, everyone up here will tell you, as much as I mess up, so I'm not saying a word to anyone. So, this, anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ14, to rezone an area along Medical Center Parkway to mixed-use MU District and Gateway Design Overlay 3 GDO District. Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance had the second. Motion of second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH15, adopted by the city council on March 15th, 2018, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately 130 acres in the planned unit development PUD district located along Fortress Boulevard and Franklin Road, Victory Station PUD. Swanson Development is the applicant. Notice that said public hearing was published in the March 27th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This second public hearing is to consider an amendment to an existing PUD, Planned Unit District zoning, on property owned by the Swanson Development, located along Franklin Road or Highway 96. You can see the entire PUD, Victory Station PUD, is identified in the blue color on the map, and then on top of that blue color is a hatched pattern, and that hatched pattern represents the areas that will be affected by this PUD amendment. This amendment has come to our office because the developers wished to add some additional uses to some of these out parcels, and at that time, the developer submitted a comprehensive list of those types of uses that he would like to include in this PUD. Staff had some concerns, and planning commission had some concerns with some of the uses, so some of the uses that were initially proposed have been removed from the proposed amendment, and some limitations have been placed on other ones. For example, staff was concerned with allowing multifamily by right, and they removed multifamily from the proposal. Also, staff was concerned with the, like, one of the uses, which is garden and lawn supplies, not so much for the fact of selling garden lawn supplies, but the way development looks and is maintained in those types of developments. So, the applicant proposed, and the planning commission thought it was a good idea, that that remain as a use that be allowed, but that there be the stipulation that there's no outdoor storage. So, there's large bins of mulch and those plants and things that you see in the parking lots, that's something that we wanted to avoid in this area, because this is in a, the development is a high-class development, it looks really good. Also, boat rental, sales and repair, staff was concerned with that, particularly the effect that it has on land use in a mixed-use development. So, the applicants again proposed to exclude bodywork, outdoor storage, and not allow any bay doors to face the public rights of way, and that was the condition that planning commission felt comfortable with. Of course, selling boats was, is an obnoxious thing, but it could get out of hand if you were maintaining them. Motor vehicle sales, staff again had a concern with that, and so there is now an exclusion that doesn't allow bodywork or outdoor storage and bay doors to face the right of way. And then, staff was concerned, and planning commission was concerned with allowing pawn shops, but the applicant added a condition that these can only be allowed in a commercial center or larger, so that means one of the multi-tenant retail buildings that you see, typically, they're 25,000 square feet or a little less. It could be a suite in one of those, but not a standalone pawn shop, and so that was what was proposed and approved by planning commission. And then, vehicle sales, they restricted that to indoor sales only. So, you can see from this chart, the uses that are there that have the black X are uses that are already permitted, the ones with the red N are those that which they're proposing, and the conditions are in italics. So, the planning commission did spend quite a bit of time on this application, and so the chart that you have been provided is their recommendation for you to approve it. They did conduct a public hearing prior to making this recommendation, and all five members present that evening did vote in favor of this plan. The 2035 plan is generally consistent with the request as well. I'd be glad to... I'd be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Taylor, do you have a presentation for this? Oh, Mr. Mulchen does. Um, he'd like to provide you some additional information. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. And, um, so this one's only for property that's on Franklin Road.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Rob Mulchen, SEC. I'm here tonight with Mr. Joe Swanson, Jr., and Mr. Matt Taylor from SEC in regards to our request to add some more additional uses to the overall PUD for Victory Station. More or less, we're looking at what you see in regards to the request we're asking for tonight is a reflection upon a plan that was originally approved way back in two thousand, so we're eighteen years down the road in regards to this overall PUD. Mr. Swanson's seen this overall commercial landscape change in the last eighteen years and is requesting these modifications in regards to additional uses he sees as more opportunistic in regards to today's economy versus it was in two thousand on that side. So, that's more or less where our request is for, is to add these additional uses to allow for better opportunities for him to move forward with these properties that he's been working forward on the last eighteen years in regards to this Victory Station. So, I'm available for any questions now. We're off to public hearing. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider on passage for first reading ordinance eighteen oh Z fifteen to amend the conditions applicable to approximately a hundred and thirty acres in the planned unit development PUD district located along Fortress Boulevard and Franklin Road Victory Station PUD.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution eighteen RPH sixteen adopted by the city council on March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately forty-eight point twenty-one acres in the planned signage overlay PSO district located along Old Fort Parkway and Stones River Mall Boulevard. SVAP two Stones River LLC is the applicant. Notice that said public hearing was published in the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, the Stones River Mall, which is located at seventeen twenty Old Fort Parkway, consists of an enclosed mall and an open-air lifestyle shopping center on about forty-five, forty-eight acres. In two thousand and seven, the owner applied for and received approval for a planned sign overlay zoning. Since then, the new owners, which is Sterling Organization, has received approval to build a new multiplex theater, which is currently under construction, in the location of where the food court and Books-A-Million were, and they have since been demolished. The owners are updating their planned sign overlay pattern book to reflect the new ownership name, a rebranding of the mall to Stone River Town Center, and signs for the new AMC Theater. The changes consist of a few change, face changes to the pylon monument signs to reflect the new owner's name and the rebranding. Uh, existing tenant signage at the mall will not change except for the new signs for the theater. I believe you all have a copy of the PSO pattern booklet for your review. Both the building and codes and planning department have reviewed the booklet and are recommending approval. Uh, I think tonight you're to have a public hearing, and John Speed with the Sterling Corporation is here to give you a short presentation.
My name is John Speed. I'm with Sterling Organization, representing SVAP two Stones River. Can we pull the packet up on the screen? Thank you. As Robert mentioned, we are just updating the PSOD in light of our addition AMC movie theater. In this packet, there's a number of pages that are, I would say, relevant. Uh, we're rebranding Stones River Town Center. Just changed mall to town center. We updated the, there we go, there we go. On page one point two, you can see we updated the site plan to show AMC movie theater where the food court used to be. Same on one point three. If you go to page two point one, it shows the updates to the pylon sign. We changed the logo on there again. We updated the ownership information to Sterling Organization and just clarified dimensions of the panels. Another update we made was to update the pictures of the existing signs shown on two point two and two point three. You go to page two point nine, that shows the existing mall entrance. Again, we're all just changing mall to town center on there. Two point ten is the new mall entrance we are creating across from AMC. Then, the only other significant change is on four point seven, which is quite a ways And that is the AMC signage exhibit. This is what they had applied for. Uh, it's been approved, I believe. Robert? Yeah, it's been approved. We have all four faces of the building shown there. That sums up all the changes we made. Happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
How long's the mall been there? Robert, how long?
Excellent question.
Thirty-four years? So, forty, yeah. Appreciate the investment. I think it drives by there daily and looks to see what's going on over there with that continually is improving, so. All right, we need to, any questions for the applicant? Okay, we need to conduct a public hearing on this planned sign overlay. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, uh, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider, you know, I'll put here, this PSO sign overlay request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, pursuant to Resolution eighteen RPH zero eight adopted by the city council on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, we need to conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of fifty-five acres, and, two, the zoning of approximately fifty-five acres along Asbury Road in planned unit development PUD district, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Joseph C. Smith, Ricky D. Smith, and Sazarak of Tennessee, applicants. Notice that said public hearing was published in the February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Marina Rush. I'm a principal planner with the city of Murfreesboro Planning Department. The planning commission had conducted a public hearing on January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen for the annexation request and voted, um, voted to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. The annexation study reviewed by the planning commission referenced two residences on the property. This was an error, as there's only one residence on the site. This was because a second residence was approved for the property by the Rutherford County Planning, but it was not constructed. Uh, there are corrected pages for the plan of services that were provided to the city council for this consideration. In addition, the fire marshal has indicated that any development of this site must include a fire hydrant, a drive between the hydrant and house that can sustain the weight of the fire truck, wider gate opening, and vegetation trimming before the effective date of annexation or removal of the structure. The applicant has indicated that they would be willing to, to support these requirements, and those notes were also provided as changes to the plan of service for your consideration. A written petition requesting annexation had been filed by Mr. Joseph Smith and Mr. Ricky Smith, represented by SEC, Mr. Matt Taylor. The parcel is approximately fifty-five acres, as had been noted, and is located along Asbury Road, east of Interstate twenty-four, south of Bingham Street, and west of Grassland Drive. The annexation includes this parcel and five hundred linear feet of Asbury Road. The property is inside the urban city growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limit line to the south. Based on the annexation study, it appears that the city services can be extended to the property upon the effective date of annexation or its development occurs. There is also an accompanying zone change requested to planned unit development with a pattern book, which will be the next item on the agenda. This first item is only regarding the annexation of the property and the plan of services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I know we have a lot, thank you very much. We have a lot of people, I know, who want to speak about this, but, um, the state law changed a couple of years ago on how we have to handle public hearings, uh, which it's a little different. So, we are going to hold a public hearing on the annexation and the plan of services, um, and basically that's that it can be annexed and that we can provide services to that. Then, we'll have a public hearing on the zoning request, which I think is what most people are here to talk about. If the zoning request is not approved, then the annexation and the plan of services are null and void. So, we're, we have to follow this, this process just to get through. You're welcome to speak at the public hearing on the annexation and the, and the, the plan of services, uh, but that's really just that we can do that before we get to the zoning. So, wanted to say that before we, we start the public hearing, that would be just on the annexation. All right, we need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for and annexation of approximately fifty-five acres along Asbury Road. Joseph C. Smith and Ricky D. Smith are the applicants. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the annexation and the plan of services, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution eighteen RPS oh eight to adopt a plan of services for approximately fifty-five acres along Asbury Road. Joseph C. Smith and Ricky D. Smith are the applicants.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now need to consider for adoption Resolution eighteen R eight oh eight to annex approximately fifty-five acres along Asbury Road and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Joseph C. Smith and Ricky D. Smith are the applicants, two thousand and seventeen dash five twenty.
Thank you very much. Um, as noted, the planning commission had conducted the public hearing for this rezoning request on January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, and voted to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. The applicant is Sazarak of Tennessee, represented by SEC, Mr. Matt Taylor, and is requesting rezoning of a fifty-five acre parcel.
Okay, I hate to interrupt you, but we still need to adopt the resolution for the annexation. We haven't, we're not to the zoning yet. Nope, no problem. All right, I need a, a motion for the annexation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately fifty-five acres along Asbury Road as a planned unit development PUD district simultaneous with annexation. Sazarak of Tennessee is the applicant. Now.
Thank you for your patience, and I do apologize. I'm getting better at this, I hope.
It's all right.
Um, as indicated, it was before the planning commission on January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, the commission voted to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Um, the property is located at fifty-two ninety-five Asbury Road, north of the Thistle Downs subdivision in the city, which is zone PUD. The adjacent properties to the east and north are in the unincorporated county and are part of the Youngstown Residential subdivision. Interstate twenty-four is to the west, and a large undeveloped track is located to the northwest. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan recommends the property to be developed as suburban residential character. This designation intends residential development with open spaces and encourages clustering of development to achieve larger open space. This proposal concentrates the buildings to the interior and west side of the property and retains large areas of open space and native vegetation on the south and east portions of the property. The city council could determine if the proposal is consistent with this land use designation or if the long-term vision for this area changes due to the nature of the newly adopted twenty forty major transportation plan, where that plan identifies a five-lane arterial roadway with future interchange with I twenty-four. On the twenty, on the January seventeenth planning commission hearing, it was very well-attended by several members of the community, and comments were made in regards to very general traffic and road improvements, whiskey fungus, the hours of operation and noise, height of the buildings. The industrial allows seventy-five feet. The, the buildings here have a variety of range, but the tallest buildings are sixty-six feet in height. Comments were also made about the twenty thirty-five plan, and, um, just to provide some context, if the property was to develop with the whiskey distillery, um, notes have been indicated that there could be up to fifty thousand visitors per year. Um, the average daily trips for that number is between sixty and seventy daily trips. If this property was to develop with housing, half of the property is a lake, so half of it would be housing. Average daily trips would be in the neighborhood of, um, seven hundred, and if it was commercial, would be even greater. So, there is quite a difference there. The assistant city engineer, Mr. Huddleston, is here this evening and is able to address any questions regarding the road improvements. Um, he also indicated that there was a report prepared by a city contracted thirty, third-party peer review regarding the bacterial technical study, so he'll be able to respond to any questions on that behalf as well. The planning commission did ask and direct the, the applicant to make changes to the pattern book. They complied by specifying the hours of operation by each use to make it very clear what would be operated during what hours of the day. Um, they also required that a statement be included in the pattern book regarding the city's noise ordinance, that they will abide by the city's noise ordinance. So, once, if they are annexed into the city, um, they, like anyone else, have to comply with those noise requirements. Um, there was also a inconsistency with the barrel house height, um, and that was made, rather than the seventy-five foot noted in one page of the book, to be sixty-six feet, which is the tallest height that they have. Those buildings would be oriented towards the west side of the property, closest to the highway. The shorter buildings are closer towards the middle and closest to the residence, so less visible. The applicants are available to make a presentation regarding the zoning and pattern book, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. Thank you.
I'm Matt Taylor from SEC here in town. I'm accompanied by several people tonight I'd like to introduce before we get started. Uh, first of those is Rob Mulchen, landscape architect with SEC. We have two representatives from Sazarak, Ms. Alyssa Henley, who's a master distiller, and Mr. John Lunn, who is also a master distiller. Uh, in addition to them, we have Mary Beth Hagan of the Hagan Law Group here in Murfreesboro, and Dr. Ann Pringle, a mycologist from the University of Wisconsin. Uh, we're here tonight to present to you a rezoning request to a PUD or a PUD, which would allow for a distillery to construct and produce Tennessee whiskey, which would compete with names such as Jack Daniels and George Dickel. Uh, the Sazarak Company is an American family-owned private distiller. They're the largest private distiller in America and the fifth-largest in the world. I'd like to start with the property itself. Uh, as Ms. Rush said, this is about fifty-five acres in size. It's located to the north of I twenty-four and west of Florence Road. As you can see, there's a lot of existing heavy vegetation on the site, and the most significant existing feature on the site would be the five-to-six acre lake slash quarry that sits at the heart of the property. We do have several stub streets into the property. As Ms. Rush indicated during the annexation, we have Bingham, Grassland, and Junebug, each of those located to the northeast and south respectively. Uh, we're also bounded on the south by Asbury Road. This is where the- This is where the existing home gets its primary access to the property currently. None of those stub streets, Bingham, Grassland, or Junebug, are planned to have a traffic connection with our proposed development plan. In addition, each of those stub streets will also provide for our utility connections, whether that's sewer, water, or electric or natural gas. Each of those provides that. Oddly enough, the existing lake is basically the high point of the property. From there, it sheds in about three different directions, one to the northeast, to the southeast, and to the west. Our proposed development will comply with all of the city's stormwater regulations. That would be water quality as well as pre versus post-development requirements at the conclusion of our project. Existing zone in the property is still in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. It is R.M. The properties to the west, north, and east are of like zoning, and the property to the south is a city subdivision, Thistle Downs, which is zoned a P.U.D. as well. It's a mixture of single-family homes and commercial uses. The two thousand thirty-five plan, as Ms. Rush indicated, calls for a new interchange to be constructed off I twenty-four. It calls for this particular project to be developed under suburban residential zoning classification and then properties to the north and south of auto-urban. That plan also makes indication for that interchange. We feel like due to that interchange and the extension of Cherry Lane, that this area will change and will be better suited for non-residential uses. In order to mitigate those effects to the properties that are already developed to our east, we've planned for large residential, or large opens expanses and large buffers, which is directly how the two thousand thirty-five plan calls to make those transitions. Here's some pictures of the existing site itself. This is an existing driveway that's on the eastern side of the property. We'll have a proposed driveway in about this same location on our plan. This is on the western side of the property. This is approximately where our barrel warehouses are proposed to sit. You'll notice that this area is void of any large vegetation or trees, and that's because this area was filled by the Florence Road contractor for excess materials there. They used Asbury Road to bring that material down. They also stored their construction equipment at this location while they were building that road. Here's a picture of the existing lake. This picture really doesn't do it justice, but it is a very beautiful feature, one of the prime things that attracted my client to this property. It actually started as a quarry for the construction of I twenty-four some forty years ago, I believe. And after they dug so deep, they found a couple of natural springs, and it's continued to hold water since. We view this asset as an asset to our property. We want to embrace it with our design. I think you'll see that we have done that. We want to highlight this feature, something that we feel like we can do that is different than, say, residential development, who would have to view this as a liability because they could not control the children or pets or just anybody accessing these large drop-offs as you go around this feature. Here's a picture of existing Asbury. This is directly in front of our property. Our property will be to the left. We will be looking east back toward Florence Road, and then I twenty-four will be on the right immediately past the trees that you see. Existing homes, this is in Thistle Downs, located to the south of us. This is in Youngstown, to the east of our location. This is a stub street of Bingham. This is on the north side of the property, looking south. Again, we will not have a traffic connection with our plan here. This is Junebug, looking from the south in Thistle Downs, north toward our property. Again, no traffic connection to this. And then this is Grassland Drive, located on the east side of our property. And this is actually where the fire hydrant and gravel drive for the existing house would come from, but the plan itself will now have no permanent connection at this location. Plan itself, as I mentioned at the beginning, we have requested a PUD zoning. That essentially means we can build this plan, nothing more. Our buildings can't get bigger, they cannot get taller, we cannot add buildings. We can certainly take them away, so it's less dense, but this is the plan that we'll be stuck with, for lack of a better term. We have planned for eight main buildings on this plan. We do have several accessory structures such as silos and guard shacks planned in addition to those eight main buildings. You'll notice we have planned most of our activities and buildings on the western side and central part of the property. We did this from the get-go in an effort to try to be a good neighbor. We know the properties to the east have previously developed, and we wanted to pull that activity away. Hopefully, you'll notice that there is a large amount of green on this plan. We estimate about seventy percent will remain green or open space in the likelihood of the lake. We want to take advantage of the existing vegetation here, leave those buffers in place. It's very dense vegetation, serves us as well as serves our neighbors, and we would like to leave that. Buildings themselves, the visitor center, this is where our guests will come to. This is where a gift shop will be. This is where tours would start. Tours and tourism in general will be a big part of this facility. The distillery will be connected to that building. This is where the still and other production of the actual whiskey will occur. Bottling building, this is where we'll take it from the barrels and actually put it in the bottle and get it ready to ship to our customers. We proposed four barrel warehouses. They're in the northwest corner of the property. These are twenty, these can hold about twenty thousand barrels apiece. We project for two of those to occur in the first phase, and then two of those to happen at some future date as needed. The closest building to existing homes along banks would be the V.I.P. Meeting Center. This is where we'd hold small gatherings for people from the industry to learn more about our products. And for reference, this is sitting about where the existing house is sitting today. On the western side of the property, we have the charcoal pavilion. Operating hours, when we first opened, we planned and intend to have one shift that would operate from about eight to five on the production schedule. If need be in the future, which we see the potential, we would add a second shift, so both would run from six a.m. to ten p.m. total. We anticipate hiring about twenty to twenty-five employees. The bulk of those will be contained for the tourist side. They'll be given tours, manning the gift shop, and handling that side of the business. Very few are needed to, on the production side. You do not have to do much with these barrels once they get in those facilities. Any of our other activities that we have planned on-site would also wrap up by ten a.m. That is one of the changes we made in, since Planning Commission. We also anticipate, under the one shift, we'd have about four to six trucks per day. When we go to two shifts, we'd roughly double that to about eight to twelve. The proposed plan, in our booklet, we've outlined several allowable uses. The main ones of those would be the distillery and the warehousing, but we do have several other incidental uses, so we want to make sure to allow those exclusively on the site. They would involve the distillery, obviously. Visitor Center and V.I.P. could be considered some restaurant-type use. These same buildings could have event-type space. If you've been to any of these facilities across this state or other states, they like to tell a story, and so these could be considered partially museum. As I mentioned earlier, our tourism is a big factor with these facilities, and of course, the warehousing of our product. We do have several uses outlined here. We'll say that each of these uses are quiet in nature. The bulk of the activities for this entire campus will occur inside the buildings and not outside. Our outside activities are mainly limited to the vehicles that come and go. We do have, we will have a grain elevator that brings in materials from the grain silos into the distillery. That will run intermittently, and is fairly quiet, especially given the distance between our buildings and the surrounding neighborhoods. One thing you'll notice on our architecture is it's going to be consistent throughout. We want to use good quality materials, try to use natural materials, and try to embrace this lake at every opportunity. These buildings are not going to be your typical retail center. They're going to have unique features, a lot of character to them. It's probably an architect's dream to design something like this, I'm guessing. All right, we're going to start with the visitor center and distillery building. We envision these to be connected and have a maximum height of fifty feet. This will house our tasting room. You may have heard the term hammer mill associated with distilleries. It will be located inside the distillery. That's what crushes up the grain as they come in to be used in our production process. You'll see some of the materials, wood, stone, metal, a lot of curved features here, which you don't get to see very often. A lot of glazing, especially focusing on the lake itself. Next is the bottling and processing building. This building is going to be quiet a lot of times. It will only be active during bottling processes, so it may go weeks or months without a lot of activity. But as we start to pull those barrels out of the warehouses, activity would ramp up for a short period of time. Again, the architect's done a lot of good things with a, with a building that's hard to make look good. He has done various roof planes, building planes, and he's capped this building at forty-six feet in height. And you'll see here some of the example building materials that he proposes. Warehouses, again, these will be a maximum of sixty-six feet tall, and we only plan to build two of these in our first phase, and they'll house about twenty thousand barrels apiece. These buildings, again, we use the same similar materials as the rest of the campus, standing seam metal and limestone. Again, these are very quiet buildings. Once the barrels are there, there's not a lot of activity that goes on except for to rotate them occasionally. Charcoal Pavilion, in order to qualify for Tennessee whiskey, you have to filter this product through a charcoal, and we intend to create our own charcoal. We do that by stacking wood in a honeycomb fashion and then burning it for a period of five, six, seven hours. This would be coordinated with the fire department, of course, and meet all fire codes. Once that burn is done, we take that, let it, allow it to dry under this pavilion, crush it up, and then store it in the silo adjoining this. This was one of the changes that we made since Planning Commission. Ms. Jones did not like an architectural option that we had provided, so we just eliminated that and deleted it to what you have in your book now. Again, this building will have a maximum height of seventy-five feet. The V.I.P. Meeting Center, this is going to be our, kind of our wow building for our guests. People show up here that want to buy our product.
Yeah, I think it said twenty-five feet. Was it twenty-five or seventy-five? The last one, the charcoal.
Twenty-five. If I said seventy, sorry.
Thank you, Dean.
So, the, this building is where possible buyers or people that want to get to know more about our product will come. We will have a small kitchen in this facility. We want it to be pulled right up on the lake. You'll see a lot of glazing and window. We want to really take advantage of that lake here. But again, these are going to be small events, infrequent in nature. We're not trying to recreate Arrington Vineyards at this location. Nothing wrong with Arrington Vineyards, they do a great job, but our main goal here is whiskey production and not events. I mentioned the buffers earlier and the existing vegetation. You'll notice, on your concept plan, that there's two different color greens. A darker, more leafy textured green is the existing vegetation that we intend to leave in place. It's providing a great buffer today, and we don't want to disturb that. It's as important to us as it is our neighbors for our campus fill that we want to create. The lighter shade green that you'll see, kind of clouded around the perimeter of the property in certain locations, are places that we self-identified, that we, we thought the buffer was thin today and that we want to make thicker. So we've committed to those locations having a city-standard type-D buffer installed when we do construction to help achieve that goal. And we cut some sightlines from some of the surrounding neighborhoods to show how this vegetation will help show that and cut down on that visual impact. And both of these, these first two are from the north side looking toward the warehouse. This is looking from the east side toward the warehouse, and this is from the east side looking toward the visitor center, since it's a little closer. The existing buffers, here's some pictures. This is looking from about where the distillery building will sit, looking south. You can see very dense stand of trees here. This is looking toward the east, giving you a little closer look of what those trees consist of. This is on the eastern perimeter. This is looking at one of those locations where we self-identified, we want to beef that up. You can still see, this picture was taken in December. It still provides a pretty good screen, but we felt like it could use some help. So we want to, we've made that offer. And then this is further south. You're looking at a shared driveway. There's an existing drive and an existing easement right for a couple of neighbors to the east. That driveway will remain, but beyond that, you can see how dense that tree row is, even this, as close as I am here. Again, some more pictures. This is on the western side, another location where you have self-identified to enhance this buffer. This is looking from basically the back porch of the existing house, looking toward the northeast. See, you can't see those structures. However, this picture's on the other side of that tree row, so you can see what we're buffering us from and what we're buffering them from. It's a very effective stand of trees. And then this is on the northern side, again, a thinned-out area that we're going to be supplementing with our development. We've often said here that distance is a great buffer, and so each one of these rings is a increase in three hundred feet from, measured from about the center of the distillery building. And so from the center of the distillery building to the closest house along Bank Street is about seven hundred and fifty feet, and to the closest house in Thistle Downs is approximately nine hundred feet. If you move that and start measuring closest distances from corners of the proposed barrel warehouses, you're looking at about eleven hundred to twelve hundred feet to the closest house on Banks, and about fourteen to fifteen hundred feet to the closest house in Thistle Access, I mentioned earlier, there's a future interchange plan for I twenty-four according to the new two thousand forty plan. Along with that, there's an extension of Cherry, Cherry Lane that's coming around, and we envision that to be our permanent access. We have offered to enter into a road development agreement to help fund and move forward the construction of that access road, and our other access points would become emergency-type exits if the farm marshal so desired. During construction, we would utilize Asbury Road in the pattern that you see in yellow here. That access route does pass by about eight or nine existing residential lots at the front of Thistle Downs. When we started this process, there were no existing houses there. I do believe several of those houses have started construction now. But from their own, it would be on Asbury Road, which is behind the existing houses, in between that and I twenty-four. We did hold a neighborhood meeting back in September. We sent out about two hundred and sixty letters to that number of households. We estimated we had about fifty to sixty attendees that night, so felt like we had about fifteen percent response, which is a pretty good response for those sorts of things. We had several concerns expressed at that meeting. We took several more months before we made application to the city Planning Commission to try to address those items. First of those was access. At the time, we had not come up with a plan for the Cherry Lane extension, and so in between the neighborhood meeting and the Planning Commission's supplemental, we made our offer to enter into that road development agreement, and we still stand by that offer Second was concerns of whiskey mold, and between those times, we went out and spent the time in effort to hire Mr. or Ms. Dr. Pringle, and she did, she came, visited the site, visited surrounding areas, and she wrote a letter for Planning Commission to try to alleviate some of those concerns. She came and spoke at Planning Commission and has since written a follow-up letter, which I think you should have received, to address some additional concerns she heard at Planning Commission. So she will be available later tonight if you want to ask her some questions. She'll be happy to walk through those again as well. Ethanol was a concern, so in between those, after that neighborhood meeting, we hired an expert in ethanol to outline when ethanol is a concern. There were no health risks with ethanol. Any odor issues expressed with ethanol are not of concern until it reaches a concentration of about eighty parts per million. Our facility will operate at less than five parts per million. And then any fire risk from ethanol occur in a density greater than thirty-three thousand parts per million, and again, we'll be operating less than five. There's also concerns of smell from the facility. These smells are largely contained in the building and are not of an alcohol smell. They are more of a sweet cornbread smell, would probably be a better way to describe that. And by and large, you And by and large, you smell that inside the buildings. You may get a waft outside occasionally, but it's not a constant smell and is definitely not an alcoholic smell. And then noise. As I mentioned earlier, our hammer mill will be located inside to limit that noise. We will have a grain elevator that will run intermittently that releases a minimal amount of noise. Our trucks on site and our vehicles on site would be another noise source. But again, those activities are planned on the western side of the site. It will certainly be less than the noise generated by I-24 directly to the south. And then Ms. Rush already went over the changes that we came out of Planning Commission, so I will skip over those. And then, of course, the fire department requirements for the annexation I have outlined here. The existing driveway has to be limbed up, which has already occurred actually. And then a new fire hydrant capable of flowing at the fire department requirements has to be installed within a certain distance of the house. We have consulted with CUD. That can be done at the end of Grassland Drive. And then we have to install a drive so you can connect the house and the hydrant, and we're willing to do that. If the project is successful at a first reading, we would do all of that before we come back for a second reading. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing that you might
Any questions for the applicant? We need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against will come to the podium. If you, as stated earlier, if you represent your individual, you have three minutes. Mr. Dismuks, you're first in line. Absolutely. Hold on one second.
We already got five seconds off the clock, though.
I'm speaking for my family.
Okay, absolutely. All right.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Dismuks, 4604 Blackman Road, and I'd like to give a brief history of our family and the Blackman community. The reason I'm doing this, my brother spoke before the Planning Commission, and it got back to me, there was some grumbling in the back of the audience because he was from Watertown. So I'm going to tell you about our history. In 1787, my three great-grandfather, Colonel John Smith, bought 660 acres from two Revolutionary War veterans, and he moved from Goatsland County, Virginia, and settled on this place that y'all know as Springfield. Now, y'all zoned Springfield not long ago, and I personally want to thank you council for saving the house. My mother was born there, and she's still living, and I wanted to thank you for that. In 1951, my father bought the property that's due west of that quarry. And to tell you how times have changed, we moved our cows from Springfield, opened a gate that goes, it was a gate there that goes into Brookland subdivision, and we drove our cows down Matson Pike onto Blackman Road, and it was a gravel road then, and we drove them in the barn driveway, and that's, and we had a dairy barn milked, and we built the house in '54, and my mother still lives there now. Now, as far as the property is concerned, sub, farming and subdivisions don't mix. They're sort of like oil and water. They don't get along. We have trouble with neighbors, kids, dogs, four-wheelers and such. I have enough of that trouble now without a subdivision. Now, financially, we aren't going to benefit for this one bit. Our property stands alone. The interchange, it will be going totally on our property, and it'll be a long time coming, and so we'll still be farming that land. We think this is a good buffer for our farm. It's light industry and no noise, and it's going to be a beautiful site. Now, I thought, I had a thought right before I came here, and a lot of you are probably morally against this. Personally, I am too, but I believe in property rights, and we have tried to do away with alcohol, and we couldn't do it with prohibition. So this is in God's hands, not in our hands. So I would wish you would think very seriously about the boil issue and what's coming there because I think it'll be a benefit to the community. Thank you.
I can make this go away. My name is Ron Dennis. I live at 5233 Honeybee Drive. I need to find the regular screen here. My wife and I drove up to Jim Beam Distillery and Barton Distillery two, three weeks ago and took some pictures of some properties around whiskey distilleries. Forgive me, I'm not a computer guru, so some of these, if I could get this screen pulled Hard to see, as you can see, I kind of guesstimated where the storage is, and went out to that line, you see that line, it's about a half a mile out. If you cut that in half, about a quarter mile, it's going to be that first row of houses to the east, they're going to see a lot, potentially a whiskey mold and also houses to the north. And I say quarter mile because that's when I went to look at some of those properties, that's where I saw the most whiskey mold. I don't know how much they've got stored out there, how much they plan to store here, and what the difference will be. What I want to show you is what is possible. Some more distances right here. When you look south, that's a half mile. That's the possible, how much we can hurt, we can damage things. These trees right here are at Jim Beam. It's hard to see here. When you look at them, they're very, very black, with the exception of where the bark has fallen off of them. The closer you get to the warehouses, the worse it gets. That fire hydrant is not a quarter mile out, but it's much more than 250 feet. At 250 feet, you'll understand why I say that in a minute. That's, I'm sure it's not going to look like this, what you're proposing, but this is what it looks like over there. And notice all the black. Everything is pure black. What I want you to see back there is the trees in the background, again, black, and the back of that stop sign right there. You don't see that anywhere else, not that color black. That is a very, very... Look at this house right here. This house right here is about a quarter mile, I didn't measure it, from one of the whiskey warehouses. And look how the mold is everywhere, not just on the north side where it wasn't maintained and it's green. This house has it all the way around, and it's black. It gets down beneath the soffits, it gets, look at the, look at the stairway. It's supposed to be wooden, but it looks black. Everything just turns black. Everything looks rundown as you look at it over there. And you can see, I took this picture to show the difference between the black mold and the green mold. Two different types of mold, two different things going on there. Look at these mailboxes right here, and then a house in the background. And that mold gets inside those plastic mailboxes. It gets everywhere. There's nowhere that mold does not grow. This is one of the worst houses right here. See the ductwork going up to the house? It's rusting up. Everything there is black beneath it. And again, this is around a different area, but this is what's possible if we're not careful as to what we do here. This car right here, I spoke to this homeowner, it's been three years sitting there. That's three years' worth of whiskey mold right there. I know it looks like a lot, but that's three years, but still, three years. You can't have a car sit in three years anywhere around here and see that. That is a lot of whiskey mold. It's got to damage the paint in that car. As you look further in this picture, I've got to find it there, beneath that carport, see all that whiskey mold up beneath that carport, inside of it? As I was saying before, it gets into everything. More pictures of that car.
Mr. Dennis?
Yeah.
You're at over the three minutes.
Okay. Let me just say this right here. Whiskey mold is real. Multiple lawsuits, multiple states, it's aggressive, forms on everything. Regarding Sazerac, the question of the day is, large unknown is, the large unknown is how far the mold is expected to form beyond the Sazerac property? That is the question of the day. How far is it going to go beyond the Sazerac property?
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Tony Johnston. I am the Program Director for the Bachelor Science and Fermentation Science Program at MTSU. The MTSU, this program is basically new, this is the first year, and I think it would be beneficial to explain for a second what fermentation science is all about. Fermentation science is not about creating alcohol, it's about using fermentation to create what we need to live. We eat an incredible amount of fermented foods. Every cheese, well, with one exception, is fermented. Yogurt, sour cream, pastrami, salami, pepperoni, bread. We treat wastewater with fermentation. We depend on fermentation to survive. This program is about the science of fermentation. The value of this distillery being in Murfreesboro, basically 20 minutes from the campus, is that my program, which is unique not only to MTSU and to the state, but actually in the whole country, we would have access to a distillery operation where we can go to teach our students how to use fermentation for that specific product. It's not important that they understand how to make alcohol, it's that they understand that this is a typical product that can be made from fermentation, and then we can use that to expand in the general concept of what is the science of fermentation. So I'm speaking to endorse the rezoning of this property so that we can build this distillery here, and we can give my program an even greater unique character that other universities around the country simply will be difficult to, they'll find difficult to duplicate. Thank you.
My name's David Andrews. I live at 5212 Honeybee Drive, and I'm totally against the location. I'm not against the company, but there's only one way in, one way out of this place, and that's through a subdivision. You're going to bring semis through there, you've got kids playing there. If you're going to bring it, make them wait till they do that Cherry Lane until you get more access. I mean, that's just ridiculous, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
My name's Patrick Banker. I'm at 2926 Lightningbug Drive. Over the past six months, our community has been fighting an uphill battle over a proposal that should have been denied a long time ago based on simple research and common sense. Any proposal to build a heavy industrial facility comes with undeniable inherent risks, but that is even more prevalent in this facility than it is in a residential neighborhood. Heavy traffic, air, noise, and light pollution affect all industrial facilities, and whiskey fungus affects all distilleries. These threats are dangerous, are going to affect us negatively, and will drive down the values of our homes. Sazerac's own estimate was they expect 50,000 visitors per year, subtracting holidays, that is a potential 175 extra cars per day. If you add their semi trucks, barrel trucks, and workers, this potential increases over 200 additional vehicles driving directly through one entrance of our neighborhood every single day. That is far more traffic than we have right now, and we currently have three entrances to our neighborhood. That is, there is no other type of facility that could be built on that property that would have anywhere near that much traffic, especially using one entrance. In fact, your own planning commission admitted that the roads were not even suitable for this type of facility or this amount of traffic, giving the surrounding roads an F rating for the facility at the planning commission meeting. The only way that changes is if an interchange is built, but even in the best-case scenario, assuming everything goes perfectly, the planning commission admitted that the road would not be built for nearly five to six years minimum. So what happens between now and then? Or even worse, what happens if it never gets built at all? Not to mention the potential for drunk driving through our neighborhood when people leave, just like any other restaurant or bar, despite what Matt says, they cannot prevent every drunk person from leaving the facility. Therefore, they will have that as an additional threat. Furthermore, Mr. Smotherman at the last meeting even approved a storage facility because he felt light traffic flow of that facility would not affect a nearby neighborhood. Yet this facility has significantly greater traffic and heavier traffic traveling directly in front of and behind our houses. How can this seriously be justified as being safe and acceptable in a residential neighborhood? Council members, this facility is too dangerous for this location. The air noise and light pollution, as well as the whiskey fungus, are also undeniable issues. The air pollution will come from the burning of coal and the naturally escaping ethanol that happens with all whiskey. The noise and light pollution will come from the traffic, event center, and visitor center that will now be open until 11:00 PM in our closest to our neighborhood. The whiskey fungus will be addressed shortly, but even without that threat, I can tell you from being an executive mortgage professional who has worked for the two biggest mortgage companies in the country and seen hundreds of appraisals per month, that this issue will absolutely negatively affect the values of our homes. Adding the whiskey fungus threat will only lower the values even further. In conclusion, throughout this process, we have had more than 600 residents either speak out or sign our two petitions stating their disapproval for this facility, including every resident of Thistle Downs. The only support Sazerac has presented to us to overcome these objections were contradictory to their own arguments. While they repeatedly said the roads are fine, your own planning commission said the roads are not suitable for this traffic and are graded an F. They offered nothing more than their opinion regarding the pollution concerns, and their own paid expert on whiskey fungus admitted in paragraph four of her own letter that the whiskey fungus grows, quote, "in substantial quantities," unquote, around distilleries. Other solution of planting trees to prevent these issues will take dozens of years to grow and fill out, especially with 66-foot barrel houses. Therefore, there's no solution that will prevent this from growing.
Thank you very much.
I'll give him my... What he very articulate...
Ma'am, I appreciate that.
I literally have one sentence left.
All right. Go ahead.
Council members, this vote is common sense. This facility cannot be justified simply because you cannot, because you want to build an interchange. You can still build your interchange without this facility destroying our home values and putting our children in danger. Please vote this for another location.
Thank you, Mr. Banker.
I'm going to introduce Dr. Caverina from East Tennessee State University. She's a mycologist.
Good evening. Thank you so much for listening to me. My name is Dr. Caverina. I work at the ETSU Biology Department, and my area of interest is mycology, fungal science. And so I've been asked to supply some comments on whether what we call whiskey fungus is likely to grow in the vicinity of any newly-built distillery. Now, this organism, the so-called warehouse staining fungus, or Boduania compniasens, is very interesting. It has adjusted itself to extreme habitats. It is heat resistant, cold resistant, and capable of utilizing very unusual nutrition sources, including ethanol. It means that it will literally subsist, exist on ethanol as a source of carbon, a source of nutrition. It's not limited by that, but it will. Even worse than that, it will react to traces of ethanol vapor in the air as a signal to wake up, start growth from any dormant units. What I mean by dormant units is, you have to realize that being a fungus, it propagates by spores. Spores are microscopic, invisible. If you don't see a fungus, it does not mean it's not there. Its presence is very often simply undetectable. The spores are there, they simply are dormant. Now, the particular species, whiskey fungus, you have seen what it looks like. Now, the particular species, whiskey fungus, you have seen what it looks like. It looks like literally a black stain. It does not form any fuzzy moldy growth the way green and white molds do. It is rather primitive morphologically. It causes stain and nothing else. So, before you can see this staining, there have been spores it grew out of. They have been promoted into growth by ethanol vapors in the air, reacted to them as a signal to proliferate, to germinate, basically. So, question, can we predict whether or not this growth will occur? First, is there any presence of spores before you detected it? It's not very easy to figure out. It's not likely to be there on new buildings, but it's probably there on any not-so-new buildings. Next, is there ethanol vapor in the air? Now, there is likely to be some, because it evaporates up from the barrels of whiskey warp and so on in distilleries. And when it evaporated, ethanol vapors are heavier than air. They are likely to go down, be carried on air currents, and land on any surface, and it does prefer something like an outer wall surface, because it is an extremophile. It will be where it faces no competition from other fungi that will not grow in these circumstances. So, can we predict how likely it is to grow? Well, it is likely to grow on surfaces, on outside surfaces, not inside, outside surfaces, in the vicinity of where you have ethanol vapors, which primarily means distilleries. It's not limited to distilleries, but if the question is, is it more likely to grow around a distillery? Unfortunately, it is. Well, I feel like I'm better finished sooner or later. Please ask me any questions. So I...
Thank you very much.
Did I take more time than I was?
Can I ask her a question, please?
Sure.
While you're up here, I'm taking you as an expert on this, because you sound very educated on it. What is the difference between the ethanol and gasoline, and the ethanol and the product that we're referring to here as whiskey mold? Why do we not see this mold at a gas station?
The difference between ethanol evaporating in the air and ethanol found in liquid drinks?
No, at a gas station, the ethanol that's added to the gasoline or petroleum products, why do we not see this black mold from that ethanol product there that you're referring to at distilleries?
Anywhere, there is ethanol vapor in the air and flat surfaces exposed to heat and cold. If we have no information on whether Boduania is present there, it's because nobody looked for it. There is not a lot of research, of fundamental research, available on this organism, but it has been found in mostly distilleries, to some extent, to some extent, bakeries, and probably some other manufacturing that produces ethanol vapors. It's just, no official information available so far.
And are you familiar with this community? I mean, are you from Murfreesboro?
Sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Are you from Murfreesboro? What I'm trying to do is, we've got a bakery here in Murfreesboro, and we keep referring to the bakeries having this same problem, yet I haven't noticed it around the bakery area. I'm trying to figure out the difference between the process and the manufacturing of bread, which has been referred to, and the difference in the processing of whiskey.
Manufacturing is a little bit outside of my scope, so...
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name is Nathan Peterson. I reside at 5216 Honeybee Drive in Thistle Downs Development. Like my neighbors, I oppose the distillery being built adjacent to our subdivision. Councilman Smotherman, you just asked a question about the bakery, and I'm relatively new to Murfreesboro. My question would be, was the bakery there before housing was built around it, or was housing first, bakery second? In our case, everybody from this development bought their homes under the illusion that it was a commercial, not a non-commercial area of town. It was a residential area of town, and it was not going to be zoned as light industrial. We did see that possibly it could have commercial applications in around us, shopping, convenience stores, things of that nature. But when all of us bought our homes, we did not see this type of development being made. You are an elected body. You are our representatives. You are not the representatives of business organizations. You should be representing our interest, protecting our interest. And for that matter, I ask you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Hello, my name is Kirsten Studdard. I live at 2951 Lightning Bug Drive in Murfreesboro. Y'all were just talking about the bakery here in Murfreesboro. My husband had actually sent me pictures, if y'all would like to see those, that there is the fungus everywhere. If y'all, if I'm okay to come up there, they're on my phone.
We can look at them after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have plenty of pictures. Everything is covered in black. It's all over the buildings, it's all over street signs. I don't want this in my neighborhood. I'm against the distillery.
My name is Julianne Hilli, and I live at 2920 Junebug Drive.
You mind saying your last name one more time?
Hilli. I am urging you to consider the very real negative impact that this distillery will have on the people you represent and their families. Please vote against this proposal in this location. Myself and my neighbors will endure a number of negative effects on our community: property value decline, whiskey fungus, and completely inappropriate commercial traffic through the middle of a residential neighborhood where people's children play and where people walk their pets. A residential area is not a safe nor appropriate place for an industrial facility such as this. While Sazerac's representatives may have you believe that their potential neighbors have no concerns, the complete opposite is true, as I'm sure you will hear at length tonight. Please think of the citizens of Murfreesboro and deny Sazerac's application for rezoning. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for letting me have this time. My name is Sean Erdman, E-R-D-M-A-N. I live at 2919 Junebug Drive. I wanted to kind of address some of the things that we've seen along this path, I guess I should name it. You know, I came home from work one day, and there's a letter on my table, hey, guess what? We're going to build a distillery right next to you. After a long day of work, it's not the first thing I wanted to see when I got home, you know? And as a matter of fact, I'd rather be watching The Predators tonight, but thank you for letting me be here. Yeah. Some of the things we've seen along the way, I just want to just point out kind of what we've been led down. At first, at the first meeting, these barrel houses were not going to be 66 feet tall. They've grown. The time of night that we were supposed to have these events that were not going to be a big deal, they weren't the reason for this. There wasn't going to be events. There's only going to be a few here and there, and they're going to be in around eight or nine o'clock, have grown into, oh, well, they'll probably end at 11 or 12 o'clock at night, and now we're going to have 50,000 visitors a year. That doesn't sound like we're not really using this for visitor venues. I've heard it at the planning commission, and I heard it again tonight. Mr. Taylor said, oh, the entrance, you know, Asbury Road, there's about six to eight houses. No, there's 26 houses. They're building three more right now. If you count all the houses that line Asbury Road, they're about 10 feet off Asbury Road. There's 26 houses. That doesn't include my house, although I'm pretty close to it. I could probably look out my back window and see the top of these barrel houses, once they're built 66 feet tall. One thing that wasn't addressed, light pollution. They say smell, they don't talk about the sour mash smell of the corn. We've been told a couple times now that people in a subdivision aren't good neighbors. I can tell you this, when the cows got out of Mr. DeMuke's farm, my wife was one of the ones that helped round them back into the fence, and I'm the one that closed the gate. We were also told that they don't stand to profit from this. However, Mr. Beatty works with Mr. DeMuke's on that farm, and he even told us that they plan to sell corn to the distillery. To me, that's a profit. These things just keep changing. We keep hearing different things. I wanted to make you aware of that, that we've heard different things throughout this whole process. Ms. Pringle got up and said, her spiel, she's an expert, I understand that. At the end of her spiel, she said, "I don't think you'll have a problem. I don't think you'll have a problem." What if we do have a problem? What if there is light pollution? What if there is noise pollution? What if there is smell? What if we get the fungus? They took a picture of the back of my house, said it's fungus. No test, because of course I wouldn't want one on my property. It's dirt. I'm right next to the retention pond, the wind blows to the back of my house, it's dirt. It's not mold. But yet it was presented as mold to the planning commission. That stuff bothers me deeply, because I feel there's some distrust being made here. They want to be good neighbors. I don't lie to my neighbors. You can ask my neighbors. I ask them, do my floodlights bother you? Does the sound of my Mustang bother you? I try to take care of my neighbors, not lead them astray throughout this entire process. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristy Andrews. I live at 5212 Honeybee Drive. Obviously, I'm opposed to it. Our neighborhood is our safe haven. We come home from work, we love the borough. I drive probably three-plus hours a day just to go to my job and come back to the borough to reside here, because I like it. I want to come home from work and relax, not smell some corn cooking and get a migraine. I look at other distillery pictures of homes around them, and like, at the property values, like, our homes are not $60,000 homes like I see in Kentucky at Frankfurt. I mean, we have $300,000 homes, and we would like to make a profit on those when we sell. It's just not the right place, and I know SEC keeps saying that whatever they propose you, that's what they have to do. Well, that's not exactly true. Like, we're here making changes today, they can come back and make changes. I mean, you can make changes all the time, they can make new proposals. I just don't think that it's an appropriate place. It's a neighborhood. It's not the avenue. It's a neighborhood where families are. We want to be comfortable at home. I just, to me, it just is, I can't even believe it's gone this far. To me, it's just such an idiotic proposal. It would be like me asking you to put a playground on the median on Old Fork. I mean, it's just dumb. Like, why would you, there's plenty of available land for this type of thing in Murfreesboro. I'm not opposed to the distillery, a restaurant, manufacturing it, drinking it, but not in our backyard. I mean, we want to come home and enjoy our home. I mean, that's what it's for. It's our safe haven, and we should have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak tonight. Counsel, I want to say, Mayor McFarland and Vice Mayor Madeline Scales, thanks for replying to my email that I sent on Monday, and Councilman Rick Lance for calling me on Monday to discuss his views on this proposal. I just want to echo everything...
You might tell us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick Maddes. I live at 5225 Honeybee Drive. I just want to come up and agree with my neighbors that this is not a good location for this development, let alone the traffic going through the neighborhood. If the council's wish is to put this there, then I think the condition should be that that five-lane road is constructed before they are allowed to distill one drop of whiskey there. There's no reason for that kind of traffic to go through a residential neighborhood. I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to get answered. One would be the status of that five-lane road, if the land has been acquired for that. I know Kevin Waldron owns some of that land, so I'm curious the status of that. And also, Mr. Taylor mentioned in the pattern book, the latest version of the Hours of Operation, which would be on page 15, that under the Hours of Operation, he has in there that special events will conclude no later than 10:00 PM. I don't know what that means. Is it 10:00 PM through the weekdays and weekends? There's a, as everybody knows, there's a big residential area there. If they're going to have events, special events, whatever that means, and they're going to run until 10:00 PM on a weekday, there's going to be families with children that are going to be in bed early. And I don't care about the noise ordinance, they cannot control when people go to an event at that event center and go outside into that parking lot. If they're going to linger and be loud, that is still going to transfer out to the neighborhoods. It may not be noise from inside, but there's still going to be noise from outside. And then, right after that, in the pattern book, it has the allowable uses that Mr. Taylor laid out for everyone. One of those lists event space. So under Hours of Operation, it lists special events, and allowable uses, it says event space. So I would like some clarification on that. Is this the event space covered under special events? Is that just going to be for them? Or is it going to be weddings, or birthday parties, or whatever else in that space? And if that's the case, then those also need to be addressed as hours of operation. And again, I'm not against this proposal. I think this would definitely benefit the city with the taxes and the tourism, but this is just the wrong location. Thank you.
My name is Justina Erdman. I live at 2919 Junebug Drive. And I'm really upset that I'm here today, and my voice is cracking, and I apologize. But the city of Murfreesboro faces a lot of challenges with traffic, and I know you guys are working very hard to get the roads under control. Now, Florence Road is going to get new townhomes. There's going to be two new neighborhoods that I know of. One is being built right now. There's also going to be a park in our Blackman community, and all this traffic is going to come through Florence, or Manson Pike, or Broad Street. Now, you're going to add 50,000 visitors a year to this traffic that we already, that already is out of control. I don't know how our roads can handle it. Now, Matt Taylor mentioned this Asbury entrance as temporary. The Cherry Lane extension is not going to be built at least till 2000, well, it's 2035 planned, so what, 17 more years? Now, I wouldn't consider that temporary, and all of this traffic is going through the neighborhood. If they're going to build it, there's going to be at least three years of dump truck coming through, semis, anything else that's needed to build this. Now, I have emailed you some photos that I took yesterday, and I happened to be there around 3:00, 3:00 o'clock, I guess, 4:00. And I stood there on Lightning Bug next to Asbury Road, and there was a bus coming. And I didn't realize that it was that time for kids to be dropped off, but that put another scary thought in my mind, well, the buses are going to go through there, there's going to be a dump truck coming down Asbury Road, what's going to happen there? So, there are kids playing on the road, we don't have walkways on our streets. Well, we do on Junebug, but where this is going, there isn't. There are kids, there are people walking dogs. It's just not a good place. There's a lot more places that, and I understand the lake, I understand the spring water, I get that, but we're very concerned about it, and the reason this project is even moving forward, I believe, is because of the Cherry Lane extension. Without that, this does not make sense at all. Without that, this does not make sense at all. Um, and I would vote, please vote against it. Um, there were things brought up, the interstate being behind us. When we bought the house, we knew about it, and that was really the main reason we bought it, because we figured there's retention point, pond be, behind us, there's the interstate behind us, there's nothing going to be built there, ever. And here we come, we got a letter, and here's the distillery going. It is very upsetting to all of us. We are a very tight community. We watch one after another and let people know who's coming, who's going. I had, um, two MTSU students contact me last week, they wanted to interview Sean Erdman, my husband. They got lost looking for this space. They went Asbury Road by the Grove, because you know, Asbury Road is by the Grove, and there's also Asbury Road by Florence. It took them thirty minutes to get there. Finally, they texted us, "We don't know where this is." Okay, well, you're going to have fifty thousand people coming to Murfreesboro looking for this place. They're going to be lost in our neighborhood, and I would like for you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Brandon Witt at fifty-thirteen Baker Road, and I am certainly glad to not see the fang fingers out tonight, other than, until we go home. We live in an absolutely wonderful community. None of us can deny that. We saw that tonight with Ivan and Quinn. That's what really matters in life. We saw two wonderful people with special kids, recognitions, and a quality of life that continues to improve here in Murfreesboro. Ever since my residence here in this county, when I went to college at MTSU, I've wanted to be a part of that, making a better community. I don't always succeed, but I try. I try my best. I've heard a few things about me that, quite honestly, are, are personal and go to heart. Agriculture is a really tough business. Agriculture, by all means, is going by the wayside, and I just did an interview with MTSU yesterday about the tariffs being placed by China and our elected officials up in the big land that really have a lot of implications on us as agriculturalists, but they don't understand those implications here on the ground. So, there's a couple of reasons why I speak in favor of a distillery here in Murfreesboro, here in our community. I think it's an incredibly diverse use of a piece of property. You have a piece of property that, uh, has a very large impedance on it that can be used for residential. That becomes much less of a liability and in turn becomes an asset to a piece of property with use of geothermal or whatever, uh, reasons that might be allowed to use with EPA permitting and so forth down the line. The connection to local agriculture, absolutely. There's a great need for our community. Rutherford County, there's a lot of farmers and agriculturalists here in the community. It's not just me. Many other counties and many other farmers would love to have an opportunity to work with a local industry. We work with local industries as much as possible. It's a way for us to sell our goods, to sell our raw goods that we produce that feed every family and every home here. So, yes, we welcome an opportunity, and that shouldn't be held against agriculture. I also sit on the fermentation board for our new program at MTSU. What a great opportunity. This company that is moving and has selected to come to Murfreesboro, it's not a mom-and-pop industry that really, eh, doesn't really know what they're doing, but they're going to try it out. This is the Nestle of the food, of the beverage industry. Nestle's a tremendous corporation that has a lot of procedures and protection in place, just like Sazerac does. So, if we're going to allow a distillery to come to our community, by all means, let's have it be one with a reputable standing, one that means something, one that has a background. Now, I don't talk bad about any of the, of the concerns that are, that we as residents have. They are diligent, and we should look at those, and the questions should be answered. I ask you to please, let's put the heartstrings aside, let's look at the scientis, scientific facts, and put all of those things into the equation. There's a lot of things in place here, and I look forward to hearing the new proposals on the road here coming up shortly. And Mr. Demukes did want me to remind you that it was not his cows that got out, because there haven't been cows on the property since 2014. We've got a few strays that come across the wayland there, and they have since been hauled off the market, so they shouldn't be back in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Latour, and I'm with the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, thirty-fifty Medical Center Parkway. Uh, I wanted to come for you tonight to talk about, uh, the economic development benefits of this, uh, and it has been discussed earlier. Uh, as you know, the chamber serves several functions as it relates to economic development. You can, you can, you might consider the traditional recruitment of facilities, as well as when these companies come here, they make capital investment opportunities for our, our citizens as well as our tax base. In addition, they hire people, and so we, uh, through that success and through our, our efforts, uh, we have certainly, uh, Murfreesboro as well as Rutherford County has become one of the hottest job markets in the entire country, and we're proud of that. Uh, not a lot of projects like Sazerac, uh, uh, has just jobs as well as capital investment, but in this piece, as it has been pointed out, that tourism, uh, is also a component of this. Tourism, uh, is alive and well in Rutherford County. Uh, I am proud to say that Rutherford County last year, that was named by the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development, that, uh, we were in the top ten, uh, in the state of Tennessee, and that's really without, uh, any kind of key, uh, draw in terms of a, of a mountain range or Graceland or other things like that. So, we do it organically through sports marketing, through, through cultural tourism and through other things that we have. Uh, we, we also talk about the economic impact of three hundred and thirty-one million dollars, uh, as it related to tourism expenditures in that particular, uh, last year. Uh, if we did not have tourism efforts in our community, we would all be paying approximately two hundred and thirty-four dollars more in property taxes, and I think that's important to point out. As we do with every tourism project that we look at, we always run it through an economic, um, excuse me, an economic impact model. Uh, in this case, I wanted to share with you tonight that, uh, through our economic impact model, we took a modest, uh, approach to the, uh, to the economic impact of what we were talking about with, with Sazerac and did the first two, one to two years, which would be twenty thousand visitors over, uh, the two years. Uh, we took that, ran it through our model, and I wanted you to know it came out at about three point two million dollars of economic impact, which a lot of you know, uh, is almost equivalent to a spring fling that we have through the TWSA, uh, sporting events that we have every spring. So, wanted to talk about, on behalf of that, uh, I think it's a great project. Uh, we are looking forward to, uh, continue to work with them. We've had several meetings and have great confidence that they will do what they say they're going to do, and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Can I have some handouts? Can I pass them out?
If you'll give them to Ms., or, uh, Mr. Ives, he'll be happy to pass those around.
Just leave one, make sure every member of the council gets one.
How many do you have?
I have one for, I'll count the numbers. Six.
Six.
Absolutely.
I can-
And for our finance?
Yeah, I can give, I can give them mine when I'm done, so that, that way we'll have one for the record.
Does everybody have a handout?
We do.
Uh, my name's Heather Cadenhead, and I live on Honeybee Drive, and I just want to thank all of you for taking the time to listen to all of our concerns. Um, so, um, this is, I'm speaking directly to the city council right now, and I wanted to ask you specifically, when you think of Murfreesboro, what do you think about? For me, the first word that comes to mind is home. On the first page of your handout, I included a picture of my family. My husband, who is graciously home watching our two beautiful children while I come here tonight and give up a night with my family, because this issue is very important to me. My oldest son, that you'll see in the picture there, he's six, and, uh, he has severe non-verbal autism. We're very concerned about, um, the health impacts, the noise impacts, and the light pollution, um, that this project, um, is, uh, most likely going to bring. Um, and then I have my four-year-old, he somehow ended up with red hair, we all have dark hair, but, so he's our little red-haired rascal, but, um, uh, in terms of the actual proposed distillery site, my home is actually the one that's closest to the actual proposed site, as far as I am aware. Um, I'm requesting that city council vote against this proposal for a few different reasons, which I've laid out in your handouts, and at some point, I've talked to all of you guys about it. There's been a couple of you I, I haven't been able to get in touch with, but, um, I'm, I'm thankful that I've had, been able to get in touch with most of you. Um, so, just really quickly, uh, the, the reasons that I've laid out, I'm just going to run over really quickly, there, the, what I'm going to say now is, is can, very condensed and not exactly what you'll see in the handout. So, one is, Sazerac has refused to definitively state that our private property is actually safe from black mold. We had an expert, we were told by city council that we needed to bring in a mycologist to show you all the science that said that we will be impacted. We did that. We brought in a mycologist that said, um, that it is a great likelihood that we will see this. At the last public hearing, when Sazerac spoke of, um, of the whiskey fungus, they spoke exclusively of fungi, not of Baudania. They said fungi is everywhere, but we weren't talking about all fungi. We were talking about a specific fungus called Baudania that coats buildings and vegetation in a black film. If you flip to the last page on your handout, um, you'll see a sign that's at the entrance to the Jack Daniel Distillery in Lynchburg. This sign admits, on distillery property, that black mold is, quote, "characteristic of distillery areas." Second point would be, Asbury Road's not a safe road right now. You guys have already heard a lot about that, so I won't go on about that, but if you flip to the second page of your handouts, I did put in photographs of the proximity of Asbury Road to just a few of our homes in the neighborhood. I know a few of you that I talked to hadn't had a chance to drive down that road yet, um, but as, as you'll see, some of these homes have children's play equipment in the backyard. So, if you bring, uh, visitors down there, which I realize that this is being conceived of as a temporary entrance, and also, after the Cherry Lane extension goes through, you guys would perceive this as a maintenance entrance. Well, if it's still a maintenance entrance, then you're still going to have the semi-trailer trucks coming through. So, just look at the trampolines, look at the children's play equipment. If you continue to use that as an access point, you're betting that there will never ever be an accident on that road. Because if there is, you could possibly end up with a three-year-old child playing in their backyard and their private property hurt from a semi-trailer truck that veers off course a little bit. Um, okay, so the other thing I'd like to say really quickly is, um, another aspect that hasn't been discussed is the possibility of ethanol fires on the distillery site. It's a fact that the distilling process releases ethanol vapors into the air. It's also a fact that there will be a large quantity of flammable liquids stored on the site. Ethanol fires are also known as the invisible fire, and they're very dangerous. They're smoke, ethanol's smokeless and nearly invisible to the naked eye. If you can't see it, you could very easily find yourself in the middle of a fire without realizing it.
Ms. Cadenhead, or Ms. Cadenhead gave you five minutes, so, uh, so you're, if you can wrap up, give you just a few, few seconds to wrap up, please.
Sure, absolutely. Um, apart from being harmful to my specific community, I really don't see an industrial distillery as being in step with the long-term growth goals of the city of Murfreesboro or the Blackman area. We aren't an antiquing town like Lynchburg or Belbuckle. We're a town that's home to some of Nashville's best and brightest after they get off I-24. We're a growing, educated, and increasingly health-conscious, um, city, and is a whiskey distillery really in line with the lifestyle of the average Murfreesboro resident? If not, who is the distillery for?
Ms. Cadenhead, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Baines. I reside part few tariffs here in the city of Murfreesboro. I apologize for having to read my comments, but as I've said often, I've walked, I'm old, I walk slow and I talk slow. Whiskey fungus exists. I quote from Dr. James Scott, head of the Gage Occupational and Environmental Division at the University of Toronto. "A naturally occurring mold, Baudania," and I'll skip that second part of it, "is normally slow-growing and eclipsed by other faster-growing molds. When introduced to an ethanol-rich environment, such as that surrounding a whiskey aging warehouse, it becomes uncharacteristically fast-growing, resilient, and adapted to many environments." Baudania, Baudania uses the ethanol as a carbon source, stimulating rapid growth. This explains how the mold can hook a ride on an airborne ethanol fumes and be released by moisture in the environment. I personally find Dr. Scott's explanation much more substantive than that of Sazerac's expert professor, Ann Pringle. Existing technology in the form of thermal oxidizers can capture and prevent the fugitive emissions from escaping into the surrounding neighborhoods. Can this technology be a requirement for approval of the proposed distillery? If not, why not? There are two, what are called savings clauses in the Clean Air Act. They fall under the supremacy clause of the Constitution. One allows states to adopt standards that are more stringent than those in the act. The other states nothing in this section so restrict any right which any person or class of persons may have under any statute or common law to seek enforcement of any emission standard or limitation or to seek any other relief, including the administrator or a state agency. Are these statutes, state, county, or local, are, are there any statutes, state, county, or local, that would allow the aforementioned technology to be a condition for approval of the rezoning request that would offer some measure of security for residents in mitigating the need for legal action, not because of health concerns, but due to cosmetic damage to property? And Councilman Smotherman, your question about the difference between ethanol in gasoline and eth, ethanol at a distillery, I wondered the same thing, but I got on the internet and researched it, and there's a, a, a technical explanation that's above my pay grade, but if you get it on your computer and research it, it'll explain it, why, what the difference in the ethanol in your gasoline is, and why it doesn't form a fungus on the gas pumps.
I'll be glad to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baines.
Hi, my name's David Cullen, thirty-three, forty-one, Flat Circle, and, uh, I'm here representing the Spring Lake Homeowners Association and all the residents of Spring Lake. Um, we have the largest lake, uh, the thirty-acre lake of the underground, the extensive underground system that the lake on this property is part of. I feel that we, we, uh, should get a certification from the TWRA that there definitely will or will not be any impact on the underground waterway system as a result of this operation. There's been much mention of Asbury Road. I don't know how many of you are aware that that's little more than a one-lade road that's just a one step above being a gravel road. It really is not capable of handling, uh, the big rig, uh, vehicles that they want to run down there. They'll have to cut trees back and, and do, and upgrade that road, or they won't have a road within a few days. Uh, as for the, uh, the, uh, I forgot the name, but, uh, the bypass road with the interchange, Cherry Lane, the Cherry Bypass, uh, there were a lot of residents that were hoping that we would have access to that overpass to get our kids, our grandkids, to and from school, instead of going the seven, eight miles to go way out and around over to Brown's Chapel. Um, we would thought that we could have access to an overpass that would make that three miles as a crow flies a lot more palatable, but this operation will cut off all access for the residents to that bypass- for the residents to that bypass road. I understand that the City Council is very interested in getting business revenues and how much it benefits to have more business and to develop and plop an industrial park out right in the middle of one of the most up-and-coming residential areas, growing fast with some very upscale homes. This is going to crash that market. And I got to quit there because my wife made me promise not to have another heart attack.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Dennis. I live at 5233 Honeybee Drive. I, like most of my neighbors, are not opposed to a distillery to Murfreesboro. I actually think it would be a good draw for tourism and all those things. I do not want it in my backyard. I am a spouse of a retired military person. We've spent more than 30 years moving, most of the time enforced moves that we didn't really want to do, but that's what we signed up for. When we moved to Tennessee, we didn't get the house that we wanted first off. We finally were able to have the house built that we wanted, and it was the house that I planned to stay in and retire in Tennessee because I like Murfreesboro. We have a wonderful community, neighbors that we actually talk to, and we know each other, and we do things with. I really don't want to see that change if people start moving out because they're worried about what's going to happen or what their property values are going to be, that kind of thing. My biggest thing here is I hope you will take all of the concerns into consideration and deny this approval. If you do not deny the approval, I ask that you look at the possibility of, as was stated before, requiring some type of ethanol capturing device that would require testing to verify that it is working correctly and that there would be consequences if they are not meeting the requirements of that. Or if at all possible, then the distillery gets approved, that they possibly put the aging barrel houses somewhere else on a different property. And they could still have their tourism and their distillery there. And, you know, hey, you'd have to truck people through more of Murfreesboro to take them to where the aging warehouses are and show them that. And pretty much, we all feel also that the onus is on Sazerac to prove that there are not going to be some of these issues and what they're going to do to address our concerns. It's not on the residents, and it's not on the city of Murfreesboro. It's on Sazerac. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Judy King. I live at 2904 June Bug Drive. And I actually had prepared a statement, and as I'm listening to all this, it just came to me. We were talking, my neighbor and I were talking before this meeting, and there is absolutely nothing that I can say that y'all haven't heard. And it is hot in here, Mr. Wade. It certainly is hot. That is one thing we can say. But what I do want to say is...
We're saving your taxpayer dollars.
Well, thank y'all, thank y'all, yes. One thing, Mr. Taylor painted a beautiful picture. I mean aesthetically, it's a beautiful picture. And I am all for growth in Rutherford County. We moved here three and a half years ago. It took us two years to find a house. And we're in Thistle Downs. We love our house. If y'all could even know my husband, my husband is so meticulous about keeping things clean and washing his truck, dusting it off, putting it back in the garage and things like that. And the thoughts, there's so many uncertainties. There's a lot of uncertainties tonight. And that was one thing, as I'm listening, there are multiple uncertainties about this distillery. I'm not saying I'm against the distillery, Mr. Taylor. I just am curious what the long-term effects are. I know for my home, you know, I don't want to move. I'm tickled to, I mean, just tickled pink. It took me two years to find it. I don't want to move. But I, there's a lot of uncertainties, and I would like more of the test to show what long-term effects this distillery could possibly have, not just mold-wise, but pollution-wise. That lake is gorgeous. What effects are there going to be on that? What effects are there going to be on the traffic, long-term? We're talking 2035 plan. So that's what I ask you to do. I ask you to vote what your convictions are tonight. And I ask you to look at it that maybe it's not necessarily a no from now on, a no, but a no for right now, just till you can get some more information. And I appreciate y'all. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate all my neighbors coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
My name is Sherry Rowell. I live at 4308 Bank Street. I've lived there for 28 years. I enjoy my home. I don't want to have to move. And I would think I would be about 750 feet away from the facility. I love gardening. I love flowers. I love vegetation. I love nature. I don't want to come home and see black all over my home. I don't want to sit on my patio at night and it be covered in fungus. So I ask you to vote no. I also ask you to look into your hearts and think what you would do and how you would feel if it was building, being built in your subdivision or next to your home. I thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Randy Folger. I live at 2940 Butterfly Bend. I didn't really want to be on TV. I'm pregnant, and the glow's not really working tonight. But I just wanted to say, you know, there's been a lot of talk about black mold, and I think that's one of the major issues that we're concerned about. And I know Sazerac is very confident that it won't be an issue. So if that's the case and we pass this, I would like to motion that we have something in writing saying, since they're so confident about this, that if there is black mold and damages, that they'll pay for it.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And well, now, I've got a list of questions, so if you'll give me time to make sure I don't miss anything. I think the number-one question or concern is the whiskey mold.
Yes, sir. I won't pretend to be an expert on that in the least, so I will invite Ms. Dr. Ann Pringle up. I think she's got some information she wants to share through her PowerPoint, as well as be available for any questions for you as well.
Hi, thanks so much for listening to me tonight, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to introduce myself. I'm just waiting for my PowerPoint slides to come up. So my name is Ann Pringle. I'm currently the Vilest Distinguished Achievement Professor of Botany and Bacteriology at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. And what I do in my career is I seek to understand fungal biodiversity. I'm looking to describe and understand and monitor and figure it out. And I've been doing that for more than 20 years now. I was trained at the University of Chicago and Duke University and the University of California at Berkeley before moving in 2005 to establish an independent laboratory at Harvard University, where I worked for nearly a decade. I'm here because I've been engaged by Sazerac to educate Sazerac and talk with you about mold and about Baudenia, which is sometimes called the whiskey fungus, because the papers on Baudenia are complex. And I'm trained to take complex data and teach it. I teach mycology. I teach about fungi every day in my career to a diverse audience, not just my students at the various universities I've been at, but to the public as well. And my basic message to you is that fungi and molds grow everywhere, all over the planet. They're in Murfreesboro now, and they'll be in Murfreesboro whether or not a distillery is built. So what you're seeing in these images are photographs that I've taken as I've started to do this work. I've become somewhat obsessed with black molds and taking photographs of them as I travel. So you can see a photograph from Madison, Wisconsin, where there's no distillery. You can see a photograph from Murfreesboro. I think you've seen that image before. That is clearly covered in black molds, even though there's no distillery in Murfreesboro at the moment. That's a photograph from England. That's a house that's also covered in black molds. There's no, I lived for a while in England. There's no black mold there. In Singapore, I was at a subway station. I took a photograph of the beams above me. You can see black mold all over that. And the Caribbean. These aren't unusual. And I think that you all have walked around Murfreesboro and seen these for yourself, I'm guessing, that we all have. So it's also true that you can't look at that and say, "That's Baudenia," or "That's not Baudenia." You can't just look at a black mold and see what species there are inside it. You have to scrape the mold off, and you have to do an analysis of it. And when I've done that, I can tell you that sometimes you found, you find Baudenia, and sometimes you don't. So you're looking at two photographs. Those don't look so different from each other just from your human eye looking at them. Visually, they don't look so different. One is on a distillery, and if you sample that, it is dominated by Baudenia. That, it's, you know, it's a real species. But there are 41 other species in that mold. And I think that's one of the hard things when I'm trying to talk to people about mold, is teaching about the magnitude of biodiversity that's in those substrates, in the living material that's on those substrates. There's another picture there that's pretty close to a distillery, but it's not on a distillery. And if you sample that black mold, there are 127 species in there, but none of them are Baudenia. So it's just not something that you can do by eye. I've sampled a playground that's about 100 yards from an aging warehouse that was covered with mold. There was no Baudenia in there. It was just, you know, a black biofilm crust of mold. So molds on distilleries are made up of a unique combination of species that you don't find off-distilleries. Baudenia is one of the things there, but there's a lot more going on there than Baudenia. In my professional opinion, building a distillery in Murfreesboro will not cause the growth of any more mold than what you see now. You can see molds like this house in England, like this home in Murfreesboro. If you don't like this mold, power washing is the answer. That's part of the maintenance that you do when you live in a warm, humid environment. That's part of the maintenance you do now. That's going to be part of the maintenance that you do if a distillery is built. The growths that are called warehouse staining are called warehouse staining because they grow on warehouses. And here, you're looking at an image of a warehouse in Kentucky. It's surrounded by beautiful oakleaf hydrangeas, which are definitely not power washed. This is what warehouse staining looks like. And if you sample this, you'll find Baudenia. You'll find other things. But you'll find a unique combination of things that you don't find off-site. I also want to talk to you about the literature. The literature is not straightforward. You know, it's not like reading a newspaper article. It's meant, it's written for an audience that has technical training. And I want to talk to you. I'm not going to go into a long technical description of the issues with this literature, although I'm really happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm just going to, I'm just going to point out some of the things that are going on when you look at this literature, which is generated by one laboratory and has never been replicated by any other laboratory. This is all coming from one group of people. There is an inherent conflict of interest with this literature. You all know why I'm here. I've been very upfront about why I'm here. If you look at this literature, it's not obvious that these, the people involved with this science are also being paid to test for Baudenia. They run a company called Sporometrics. So I think it's, I think it's, you know, I think that's an issue with this, with the discussion of this data. People are different one from another. One person might be prone to cardiac disease, another not. That's why you don't make broad, sweeping generalizations about whether or not someone's going to get heart disease based on the whole human population. It's the same with fungi. This data is based on work with very few fungal individuals. It's not the right thing to extrapolate that data to making a big, sweeping statement about the species as a whole. And here, you're looking at a data set with three different individuals. You can see from this data set that they have a very different biomass depending on how they're exposed to ethanol. It's not a consistent relationship between growth and ethanol. In these data, you can also see that they, this, the strains can grow better without ethanol than they can with ethanol. Glucose is just a sugar. It's a simple sugar. You can look at the growth of the strain, one of the strains that I've highlighted, 10762. With glucose, it's higher than it is with the ethanol derivative, ammonium acetate. The relationship between Baudenia and ethanol is really far from a settled story, but it was picked up by Wired Magazine, and that was kind of the start of a spin that takes the data and tells a story far beyond what the data can say. What's developed out of this really, you know, pretty limited data set is somewhat remarkable to behold. None of this work is done outside the laboratory. The laboratory is a fantastic place for controlled experiments. Nature is not a controlled experiment. So I also have some serious issues with taking these data and saying, because in the lab, when we control everything but X, this happens, that in nature, that happens too. I'm trained as an ecologist. The reason we do field work is because we understand that nature is a really different dynamic than what happens in the field. I also just want to reiterate that there's no question that Baudenia is a health risk. It is not a health risk. There is absolutely no evidence that Baudenia is a health risk, partly because people don't breathe it. It doesn't travel in air. So here's a direct quote up here. Scott et al. remarked on the relative rarity of cells resembling Baudenia compniasensis in air samples retrieved around distillery aging facilities. In other words, it's not in air. This is, you know, it's not in air. When you sample air, lots of people sample air. When you sample air, you don't find Baudenia. And so the most recent hypothesis, Scott et al. noted colonies in several geographic locations that bore signs of terrestrial gastropod grazing. That means snails. So the current idea is that this fungus may get around because snails eat it, and as they travel, they defecate, and potentially, that's how this was get around. And this is a photograph from Murfreesboro that I took of snail grazing trails. So in conclusion, I do not think that the casual observer or homeowner will notice a change in the molds in the neighborhood, just as you have to pressure wash now. You'll have to pressure wash if a distillery is built. I want to comment on the idea that that's dirt in that photograph. Obviously, I didn't sample that. That is absolutely private property. But if I were given permission to sample there, I guarantee you that I would find molds within that black growth. I don't think that that's just dirt. I can't tell just by looking at it. I'd have to sample, but I could sample.
If you, yeah.
Sorry.
But you didn't sample any of the pictures.
If y'all, folks, if you let her talk, she's, just like you had your opportunity to be able to address us, she needs to be able to have her opportunity to address us. to address us, she needs to be able to have her opportunity to address us as well. The public comment section is over with, okay? Thank you, thank you. She's representing, just like the applicant would have the opportunity at the end of these, to be able to give us information. If you watch every other public hearing we ever have, this is exactly the same process that we go through.
I also just want to point out that some of the homes near the distillery are relatively new. And so I don't think what they look like now is a good approximation of what they're going to look like a few years from now. Now, if you pressure wash, they'll stay clean. But if you don't pressure wash and you leave them be, they'll accumulate molds, and they'll look like the homes that are, the way the homes near the Sitco gas station look right now. And if you go to the neighborhood just near the distillery, that's why I showed you the picture of the sign earlier, those metal signs are a good indication of what can grow in Murphysboro even without a distillery. And with that, I'd be very happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Dr. Pringle, we already have microbreweries in Murphysboro that produce beer products, not distilleries, but breweries. Do, it's the same ethanol alcohol, right? There's no difference in the alcohol that's produced.
Yeah, if the hypothesis about ethanol is correct, which I'm not sure that it is, but if that hypothesis is correct, anywhere where you have ethanol vapors, you should see Baudenia.
Yes, I know. No, thank you.
Can you, will you be able to answer questions for the company, or are you just an expert in mold?
I think what you're asking is, can I answer questions about mold? And yes, I absolutely can.
Okay, let's say that picture that you show where it's already some mold, fungus already in that area, and the distillery is not there, you know, the picture you showed?
At the beginning?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
Go back there.
Is there a kit? I understand, I've just been doing some little research on this. I understand there's a kit that a person can buy that's around a distillery that can test the fungus and mold on their house? And if it's proven that that mold or fungus comes from the distillery, and I guess this is going to be a question for the company, will the company be willing to do the power washing expense of the house?
So I can't speak for the company. I'm not, I'm not here to talk to you about, you know, the company. I can say that those kits are offered not for Baudenia. Those kits are offered because, you know, some time ago, there was a lot of public concern about Stachybotrys, which is a toxic fungus. And those kits, I can buy them in Madison, too, are there in case you have an older home and you see, you know, in my home in Madison, if I saw a black mold and I wanted to know if it was Stachybotrys, I'll tell you that the reliability of those kits is low for lots of reasons. It's not just as easy. When you're handling a film like that, that could have 100 different species in it, there's no kit available that will allow you to test in that and probe for the presence or absence of a particular species. You'd have to extract the DNA out of that, and you'd have to sequence the DNA to understand that well. Does that make sense?
Okay, so you're saying that mold and fungus already that's in that neighborhood will be the same type that will be coming from the distillery?
I'm saying that the molds that you see, like in the Sitco, you know, in the neighborhood near the Sitco gas station, those are going to be the same.
No, I'm talking about the mold that's already on a house in that area. Didn't you say this home in Murphysboro is in the area where the distillery is?
Yeah, yeah, the one near the Sitco gas station, which is in the neighborhood of the distillery, absolutely. That mold is going to, I would anticipate that there will be very minor changes in the community composition at that house. On the distillery itself, yes, there may be warehouse staining. That's called warehouse staining for a reason. It kind of cloaks the warehouse, it'll be on the warehouse. So yeah, if it's built and I come back in 10 years and sample at the warehouse, that'll be a distinct community, but different community from the molds that are already here.
And one more. The distance that the mold will actually travel to get to a home, I think the presentation earlier, it was 900 to 1,400 feet before a home started. I think Matt said that. So how far would this mold travel before it actually affects the homes? In other words, I guess this, my son played football, but I don't know, this 900 to 1,400 square feet is, how many football fields, I can visualize that in my mind by a football field? How many football fields is that?
Right, so you can't, you cannot watch a spore travel in any way, shape, or form because a spore is so small, you know, it's beyond the limits of what a human can see. So you answer that question by sampling a surface, and you say, "Is the fungus there, or is the fungus not there?" And if the fungus is there, and you know where it came from, then you infer that's how far it traveled. And I can tell you, I've sampled, I've sampled structures that are 100, 100 yards away from an aging warehouse and have not found it. I've sampled, I've sampled surfaces that are more distant, and I do find it, but it's so rare that it's like, imagine the rarest animal you can think of, like a snow leopard or a, you know, I don't know what. That's how rare it is. So this idea that, that it has this luxuriant, overgrowth, you know, dominating community, that's just not right.
Some will build on that a little bit, just, I mean, I think, you know, one of the, one of the residents asked the question, I think it is, I mean, where she's going with this. Look, I think it's appropriate, completely appropriate for us to be, to look at the pictures around the distilleries that we can see, Jack Daniels, Jim Beam, or whatever, and see that there's something going on. Baudenia, black mold, fungus, fungi, whatever, there's something. I mean, that's just it. So we just, I mean, what I'm, you know, what I think she's asking, and what I've just been most curious about for the last two or three months, is just really that. What's, what's the likelihood? I mean, is it, is it appropriate for us to say, and look, I'll tell you, if we, if we, depending on what we do here tonight, I mean, I've tried to avoid going to Lynchburg to do this myself, but I guess I'm gonna if I get an opportunity, but, you know, it seems pretty straightforward that we should be able to find a place that has pretty similar number, you know, volume of ethanol, whatever, vapors coming off based on the number of barrels. We go downwind 100 yards and we make a test, we go downwind 200 yards and we take a test, we go downwind 300 or 400 yards and make a test?
Yeah.
And is it, does it get there, or does it not? Does it go through trees? Does it go around trees, over trees? Because there's a lot of trees in between.
Yeah, I've done that. And I could, if we go back to the picture of the warehouse, if you build an aging warehouse, you will see warehouse staining, absolutely.
Yeah.
If you go distance from there, you will not, you know, you will not see warehouse staining. You will see a different kind of mold that's made up of a different community of species that's going to be there whether you have the distillery or not.
All right, so next, so the clarification on that is, the Baudenia versus just the fact of, how does, you know, I think you answered this in a slide, but it wasn't completely clear to me. Does ethanol promote the growth of molds other than the Baudenia, you know? So like, out of all these other ones?
Yeah, you would think I would be able to answer that question, but, you know, it's funny, there are not so many people who study fungi. And you would think, I mean, given how important this is to everyone in the room, you would think that I'd be able to hand you a crystal clear answer to that, but the, but the answer is that a lot of people don't think fungi are so important, and there's not a lot of research based on that. So I don't, I can't really answer that question for you. There isn't, there, you know? I can, I can tell you that there's no other set of studies that, you know, that suggests that there's, you know, anything like a whiskey fungus.
Well, let me ask you this.
There's only one thing that's called, that's put out there in the literature, is a whiskey fungus, if that helps.
In your opinion, with what you've seen at other places and studied all this much more than I, does the volume of product, you know, the barrels, I guess I would say, the volume of barrels, does that typically correlate with the amount of staining, you know, the?
That I can't tell you, but, but I'd guess Sazerac would be able to talk about how much product they plan to have there.
No, no, I mean, does it, does it, if there's more ethanol, and, yeah, I mean, if there's more ethanol and more whiskey, is there typically more fungus?
I can't, no one has ever done any study of this fungus in nature in terms of its ethanol physiology. There are no data about that.
Does ethanol dissipate in the air as it goes?
I'm not an ethanol expert.
All right.
I guess it's a good thing we have mold because without it, we'd have no penicillin. So there are benefits of mold and fungi.
Absolutely. If you wash your clothes in any color brightening detergent, if you drink soda pop, soda pop, the citric acid in there comes from a Trichoderma species, which is an industrial fungus. You know, we all interact with fungi in our day-to-day, but mostly people don't learn about fungi, right? When you're in high school or university, I would guess most people in this room have never been exposed to it at all, so it's hard to, you know, it's hard to learn about it unless you're by chance.
Dr. Pringle, I'm concerned about staining, don't get me wrong, but I'm more concerned about health issues. Is there any evidence whatsoever that black mold causes health issues?
No.
Thank you.
Does black mold, does it grow differently depending on the trees and the plants?
I don't think it grows on trees and plants. And my sampling, I, you know, and I could show you quite a lot of pictures of aging warehouses with really beautiful plants around it. So I don't, you know, I think you can find, right now, if you go to the proposed distillery property, there's a tree growing right by that quarry lake that's covered in black sooty mold, right? But that's nothing to do with a distillery. So it, just the world of, there's a whole class of organisms called sooty molds, you know, thousands of species of sooty mold, so. And I, can I just clarify? When you ask about the health risk, the answer is no Baudenia, there's no evidence of Baudenia. I just want to use that species name just to be crystal clear.
Okay, if we have any more questions, we'll, Dr. Pringle, we'll ask you to come back up.
I should have said whiskey mold rather than black mold.
It's a, that's right, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
I should have too.
We had several questions about traffic, so I think it'd be good to see where we are on the road. I would make this comment, and routinely, the council hears me say this, I speak to groups routinely about traffic. When I moved here in 1992, there were 40,000 people here. We just got finished with our census, and we have 130,000 people that are here now. So there's 90,000 people that we can fuss out about the traffic who've moved here. You know, the 40,000 since 1992 who lived here, we don't need to fuss at them. But my guess is, I'm not going to ask the people who are, who are from Murphysboro, but I'm not from Murphysboro, and a lot of us have contributed to the traffic. So that's something that we're all dealing with. And I'm not saying that lightly, but a lot of the questions on traffic, you know, we're do, we have a 2040 transportation plan that we're working through right now, several different interchanges, several different bridges, many are in your area, that we're hoping to be able to get those, those moving along. So Sam, with that, can you tell us a little bit about the traffic?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Sam Huddleston with the City Engineering Department. Thanks for the opportunity just to give you some information generally on traffic, and then specifically about a road proposal we have for this project. You mentioned the 2040 major transportation plan, Mayor, and I think you're exactly right. That 2040 major transportation plan established, help us baseline the traffic and transportation needs in our community. And they're, they're extensive, they're mass, massive. We talked about the magnitude of projects, the magnitude of spending that we have on that. But what we also looked at was the no-action alternative. Our 2040 major transportation plan, if we implemented none of those improvements, what would be the result? And we looked specifically for the annexation feasibility study. We looked specifically at Florence Road, at the intersections upstream and downstream of the proposed facility. Today, those facilities are operating at a level of service of C, which is an acceptable level of service for traffic. As, as we project out to 2040, with or without this project, we project out to 2040, if we do not implement the recommended projects in 2040 plan, these roadways all fall to a level of service of F. So that's our no-action alternative. So with or without the distillery, we still have transportation and traffic needs in this, in this particular community. With the level, with the proposed improvements in the 2040 plan, we see those level of service, or level of service rating stay about the same at Bs and Cs. And so the, the identified need for the transportation and traffic improvements are there. Now, for this project specifically, we referred to a Cherry Lane extension, and actually, maybe a better term for that would be a connection of Cherry Lane to I-24. Will this be Cherry Lane? That's, that's up to, for decision as far as the street naming, but just for convenience, we've referred to it as a Cherry Lane extension. But it does include a five, a five-lane roadway starting on Florence Road, and I guess that would be northeast of the property, and then following the roadway around. And so it would provide an alternative access point. And we have proposed a road development agreement between the city, Sazerac, hopefully the Department of Transportation, and two property owners who have agreed to participate verbally at this point. We have agreements from all parties to move forward with that. We do not have a signed agreement at this point, but we do envision that by second reading or shortly thereafter, we'd be able to bring to council the actual road development agreement, which would include the funding and budgeting for this road proposal, and we can move ahead with that if authorized by the mayor and council to do so. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions about that specific road proposal or the more general traffic questions for the project here tonight.
Just a quick question I had, we had, I think it was Mr. Banker talked about, traffics per day. Do we have what the traffics per day would be estimated?
I think Mr. Taylor had some traffic estimates for that, and maybe even some comparisons with, with other types of development.
Also want to say, Mr. Ron Dennis, who's sitting in the state, the, the audience, he's our facilities director, he does a phenomenal job helping maintain our city buildings. But if the goal was to make us pass out before we vote tonight, then it is a...
Hey, I didn't even sniff that out.
All right, it works.
Mayor and council, Mr. Huddleston's correct. We actually had a traffic study completed for this project early on in the process, prior to planning commission's submittal. With that, they had projected a total traffic, number of trips per day, depending on when, when this facility was in its age. And so those trips per day range from 400 to 5, or 400 to 500 trips per day. So that, each trip is coming and going, so it'd be about 250, 200 to 250 cars per day. That'd be at full buildout and at maximum visitor, visitation. We also compared that to a, if this property developed as a residential neighborhood. Today, three, three units the acre is a modest number, I would say, that is lower than we see on a number of projects we, that we bring before this body. So at 300, and saying we develop about 50 acres because we've got the lake, that would give about 150 homes, which is going to produce about 1400 to 1500 trips per day. So about triple the number of vehicles from a residential neighborhood than what would come from this distillery.
And how do you calculate that 1400? Is that two, two cars per house, or?
So the, those are generated from ITE, which is a engineering, that's an Institute of Transportation Engineering. They have standards of how many trips per day are generated from an average single-family So those are, those are standards that are accepted nationwide.
Mr. Huddleston, you see?
Yeah, there you are, he's looking behind you. So back to the road, you know, we, I know we've been, we've talked about this a whole bunch, you know, all the way back to around the planning commission meeting. And I think there's been, just based on kind of dialogue with you guys, there's been several folks who at least want to see the road to, you know, to the road to, you know, to some extent, we, we're not really comfortable being this, uh, well, maybe it'll get built and we know we need the road. And I think you just explained to us that we definitely need the road, and I think we all agree that we want the road, interchange and all. Um, what specifically, does, do you have any kind of a map on, uh, ready to show, I mean, as far as what's being proposed right now and what some specifics are about what that might look like to take some of the, I mean, my understanding is that there's a road that we, we're very close to, uh, to a road being there and part of this, being part of this solution, you know, for, for, for this, uh, development. And we heard a whole lot of people who it sounds like think every car that's ever going to come through here is still going to go right through the neighborhood. And I just want to make sure, I mean, I, I, no, I don't think anybody thinks that's okay. Um, you...
I'm not the, uh, best artist in the world, but we're, we're going to start with this as a base map, if that's okay. Um, Mr. LaLance, the, um, the, the site, obviously here. And we have proposed a roadway, and this map's not hardly as adequate as I, I need it to be, but it actually would start here at this location on Florence Road and would then travel to here and then would have a connector back here. And so phase one of that project, uh, and the phase one is the, um, road development agreement that we're, we're talking about. Phase one would get us from Florence Road to the, uh, northwest corner of the, uh, proposed project. Um, ultimately, we want to see interchange here and a continuation of that over to Blackman Road to, to create a complete link. And so what we're proposing then in our road development agreement would be a, uh, a roadway that would serve the facility from Florence Road, uh, through the two, uh, properties that are adjacent to it and then serve the, uh, Sazerac property.
Yeah, so, he, help me explain, or help me understand, I think will help other folks understand, kind of the timing of what that means. When we say this is in phase one, um, and, and obviously part of what they're going to be building out is also during phase one. Does that mean they're going to be doing construction and bringing bulldozers down Asbury Road and all that kind of stuff for a year? And then we think by then we'll have the road built and then we'll transfer them over to this road? Or does that mean the road's going to be built before they start construction? I just don't know.
Sure. It, I think it's good, good information for us to be able to provide. Asbury Road will be used as a, as the only point of access for this property during construction. Um, their timing and, and our road project timing would be parallel. Um, they have some design work to do, some submittals to make back to the city, quite honestly, site plans. Um, our goal would be, uh, upon council authorization for us to move forward, um, as, as quick, quickly as practical to have this road designed and then moving directly to construction. And so our commitment to Sazerac, um, has been that we'd have the road available, uh, before their first, uh, building is occupied.
So this blue or purple, whatever road is, whatever color that is?
Right.
That road will be there before the facility opens?
That's correct.
Phase one.
And, uh, but, but, and, and I would just, just say that, that Asbury Road is the primary, um, access for, for this property up until that point.
And is, that's in writing, right? I mean, that, that will be something that's in...
Yes, that'll be, that'll be a part of the road development agreement. And, um, and I'm going to look back to Mr. Whitaker or maybe to Mr. Taylor. I believe that was also a condition, condition stipulated at the planning commission meeting when this, uh, when this plan was presented.
So, the, the, another, another question that you probably can answer, um, that I think was something on my list, uh, for, for just sort of explanation, and I, I know the answer to this, but this would be good for folks to hear, is kind of what the process looks like to change something that's in a planned unit development. You know, we've heard a little bit of, well, they'll be able to do whatever they want to do and, um, you know, which might be true in a bulk zoning. Can you explain kind of the difference there?
Sure. The, uh, the planned unit development process actually is an individual zoning plan for this property. And it requires, to modify that, it requires all of the, um, stops and steps along the way of any zoning change, uh, would first be submitted to planning commission for consideration, uh, would undergo the, the review at the planning commission. Our planning commission includes, uh, two, uh, members representing the, uh, city council. And if it passes at that location, then it's brought on to this body, uh, for, again, a public hearing and, um, consideration by this body to modify the zoning plan. And so this body and the planning commission would have, um, ultimate review and approval authority of any proposed zoning changes for this property.
And planning staff has the opportunity to just, you know, to sort of decide, for example, and I just actually don't know the answer to this question, if they said, well, we're going to change our hours of operation to, to go to midnight, is that something that would typically go back through that process or does that not? That's...
Yes, it would. The, uh, the level of tolerance for changes are, uh, very specific in the zoning ordinance regarding plan developments. And so that, uh, there are some very minor changes that could be made that are called, um, administrative, but they're very limited in their scope and very limited in their, uh, context. Any change above that, uh, would then require, uh, consideration by planning commission and, and, and the, the mayor and council. Uh, and, and they would also have to undergo the scrutiny of, uh, a staff. We generally would meet with the applicants in a pre-application conference. We would scrutinize that and then be able to help advise the planning commission. Uh, and, and we have some applicants who, um, who choose to move forward with that, and we even, uh, give staff recommendations at the planning commission to deny the zoning request if that's appropriate.
To speak on that, Mr. Taylor, we had a question, um, I think Mr. Ma, Maedlin, is it in the black shirt?
Maddie's.
Maddie's. Mr. Maddie's had a question about special events, uh, the times on the weekdays or the weekends.
So I'll, uh, I'll let, uh, Ms. Alyssa Henley, um, describe the events themselves, but the timing, uh, I believe is consistent for every day, uh, as we've outlined in the book. But I'll let her describe what the events are themselves.
Hi, thanks, Mayor and council members for having us. Uh, my name's Alyssa Henley. I'm one of the distillers with Sazerac. Um, in regards to the events, as Mr. Taylor had previously mentioned, we are not here to be an event company. We are here to make whiskey. That is our main goal. Um, we do, in the plan that you saw, we had a, uh, VIP center. Um, and we created that, uh, because in our industry, a lot of the times we want to host, you know, small groups to come in and have dinner, uh, maybe have a tasting with them, educate them. A lot of what we do is about educating and showing, um, you know, how we make our product on a day-to-day basis. Um, when we, when we talk events, I think in general, the community goes to, um, something like Arrington or some of the smaller breweries or craft distilleries where their main source of revenue is renting out their facility and having parties essentially. And that is not what we're doing. Um, and we don't have to do that. We have Sazerac, who is a great company behind us, that gives us, um, the ability to make the whiskey and let it age. Um, so we don't, we don't need to rely on renting out our facility, uh, for events such as weddings and things like that to bring in revenue. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, but what about, we had on our packet, uh, we had 10 o'clock as the time. Is that weekdays, weekends? Is, what's...
Yeah, I think we just said in general, if we were to have an event, um, that we would stop it by 10 o'clock, by 10:00 PM. Um, and I will say, that, that was put in kind of broadly if, you know, we may want to have some kind of community event. Uh, we do want to be a good partner with the community. Um, so that's why we put that in there. Um, it's nothing specific. It is not something that I would even say is going to happen on a weekly basis, much less a daily basis. It may not even happen on a monthly basis. Uh, we just wanted the option that, let's say we do want to have something nice for the community, uh, that is put in that PUD agreement, that we have an option to do that.
I have a few questions for you.
Sure.
At your other locations in the United States, um, and I've been reading, you know, about a lot of distilleries. It may not be you, but I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
Uh, at your other locations, do you have some type of air filtration system, uh, like for the mold and fungus? Don't you all have some, at your other locations, some kind of, uh, air filtration system?
I'm not sure what you mean by air filtration system.
Oxidizers.
Yeah.
Probably the oxidizer, the thermal oxidizer, whatever they call them.
The RTOs. Um, no, we do not. Um, and we do have, I think, Mr. Taylor actually has a document from the EPA stating, um, that those thermal oxidizers that are put in changes the product that we're trying to make. Um, so in our barrel warehouses, in order to make a whiskey and to get the flavor, those barrels have to be able to breathe in a natural environment. And when I say breathe, I mean like, um, expanding and contracting. So as it gets hot, cold, your barrel will go in and out and the whiskey works in and out of the wood. And that's what gives it its color, its flavor. That's what makes it a whiskey or a bourbon. If you put in, uh, the RTOs like you're suggesting, um, it takes away that natural ability to do that and it changes the product. So it, it's no longer considered a whiskey or a bourbon. It totally changes it. Um, and there is a statement by the EPA that we have, um, stating that, that it would change the industry as a whole. So we do not, um, use those, nor would we ever.
Okay. Um, why did you choose this particular location and did you look at other locations? What made this one stick out?
So I will say, we started with about 36 locations in middle Tennessee. Um, myself, I'm born and raised...
No, I mean in Murfreesboro. Did you look at any other locations?
Yeah, so I'm going to tell you, we looked, we looked within Nashville and the outlying areas of Nashville, which included Murfreesboro. We started with 36. We narrowed it down to two. One was in Nashville and one was in Murfreesboro. Um, what really drew us to Murfreesboro, one was the lake because it's a natural, it's served by two natural springs. Uh, the limestone rock gives us really pure water. It takes out a lot of the iron, which a lot of distilleries want that pure water. Um, so that was one of the attractions. Um, the very, the scenic aspect of it, the location to I-24, um, along with your thoroughfare plan of having access to I-24 was definitely, uh, one of the reasons that we settled on this, uh, particular property. And also, the fact that Murfreesboro doesn't have a distillery at this time, and we could be on the forefront of honestly partnering with the distillery and creating, um, almost a co-branding with, um, our company and the city of Murfreesboro.
So in Murfreesboro, you kind of combed the whole city and this is really the only location that was attracted to you? Are you all willing to look at other locations in Murfreesboro?
Right now, this is the property that we're interested in.
But are you willing to look at other properties in Murfreesboro?
Not at this time, no. This is what, um, I think we want to stick with mainly for the water and the other reasons that I listed.
Okay, going back to the fungus and the mold, do you all have any pending lawsuits?
Um, no, we do not. And I can let Mary Beth Hagan, who is our lawyer, if you want to come and speak. She can give you a lot of information. Uh, she's a local attorney here in Murfreesboro that has all the information on the lawsuits that you're addressing. So she could speak to that, um, with her expertise.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I won't take a lot of time because I know everybody is tired. But you're probably referencing, there was a lawsuit in Kentucky. There were actually three lawsuits in Kentucky, and they were against five different distillers. Buffalo Trace, which is a Sazerac distillery, was one of them. Also Brown Foreman, that's the same company that owns Jack Daniels. Diageo, that owns George Dickel, which is in Tullahoma. Uh, Heaven Hill and Beam. So those were the five distillers that were involved. There were three lawsuits filed around the same time in June 2012. They were filed by the same plaintiff's firm. There were about 12 plaintiffs. A few of the plaintiffs were in multiple lawsuits. And so they strategically placed the lawsuits in different courts because from a lawyer's standpoint, sometimes you might get a different result if you're in a different court. So there was one in Frankfurt, Kentucky, in the state court, one in Louisville, in the state court, and one in the federal court for Kentucky. Filed in 2012, they were making really the same claims that you've heard tonight. There were no health claims in the lawsuits. There was claims that this, basically that the ethanol from the distillery was causing mold on people's homes and cars. And they were claiming that they had property damage and that they had to clean their homes more than they would have had to, and that, um, their property values were decreased. So it was the same really framework that you've heard tonight for the opposition for this project. The lawsuits went on until about 2016. And it's important for you to understand why they were dismissed, including the one against Buffalo Trace, because I think it helps as you weigh what you've heard in terms of science and what's there and what's not there and what can be proven and what can't. So the plaintiffs had experts, and one of their experts was Dr. James Scott. So he's the fellow from, uh, Toronto that Mr. Rains spoke about. He's the one from the laboratory that did the study that's now blown up. And so you can search on Google and find out a lot of information. That all originates from this laboratory where Dr. Scott is. He was one of the plaintiff's experts. They had other experts. They did fact investigation over the four years. And the day before, one of the experts for the plaintiffs was set to testify, the plaintiff's lawyer let the distillers know that he was going to dismiss the cases. So all the cases were dismissed. Before there was any chance for Dr. Scott to be under oath and to say the claims he's saying to Wired Magazine or that are going out over the internet, he would not sit under oath because the plaintiff's lawyer walked away from the cases. And importantly, they were dismissed with prejudice, which means they can't be brought again. In a court case, you only have to prove something is more likely than not. That's the standard. You just have to tip the scale and you can win. And here, apparently, he couldn't do that. And so he dismissed his case. And I'll tell you, as an attorney, if I have a problem with the case and I'm going to dismiss it, I will dismiss it without prejudice so that if I find more information, I can bring the lawsuit again. But all of these lawsuits were dismissed with prejudice. And specifically in the motion, there's one particular motion, if you want to see, I have a copy, but it was signed by the plaintiff's lawyer and the defense lawyer, and it says there was no settlement, there was no consideration paid for this. This was not a situation where the distillers paid money to make the cases go away. The plaintiff's lawyer walked away from them. And so I leave that to you to think about where the science is on this issue, because it's the same claims and they were not given an opportunity to, to question the experts under oath. Do you have any questions about the lawsuits? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not getting tired, we're just getting warmed up. But, uh, the, uh, I, I've got a, a question, I think from the master brewer or distiller at, uh, and, and if this is a dumb question, it's okay to tell me it's a dumb question.
It's typical.
It, it wouldn't be the first time. It, uh, I know most of what I know about alcohol from watching Moonshiners.
Uh-oh.
But, um, the, uh, the charcoal filter process that you guys use?
Mm-hmm.
That's what makes it a Tennessee whiskey, is that right?
True. Yes.
Okay. And, and you, and you're going to make your own charcoal?
Yes.
And if you make it on-site, I know when I visited the Jack Daniels Distillery, they had a scrubber system of some type above their fire that scrubbed and took the particulates or whatever it would be out of the air and cleaned it before it released it in the air. So, so it, we're not talking about a big bonfire over there that's going to release smoke into the air, are we?
So what I can explain to you, but the volume of charcoal that Jack Daniels needs, that's why they need those hoods over their charcoal pits because of those emissions would just be too much, um, to meet regulations. Um, we are not looking at burning a tenth of that. Um, by estimation, we may burn, I'm guessing anywhere from maybe eight, nine times a year, we would do a burn. Um, and we plan to do it out in the open. Now, that is under a controlled area. We do have air permits. Um, there, um, the alcohol industry in general is highly regulated. It's one of the most highly regulated industries out there on a state, city, state level, federal level. Um, so when we do burn, uh, we do have the proper air permits. The burn takes about, it may blaze for three, maybe four hours tops. Um, and like I said, it's only going to be done intermittently. It's not going to be done every day. Um, I, I can't speak on behalf of Jack. I don't know how often they do it, but I would assume that it's a lot more than, than... once every so often.
I agree. And I guess even with our new fire building, there's regulations that the EPA has on us that will restrict what they would be able to release, just like they would us as with our new fire training facility, right?
Yes, they're burning plastic materials, wood, charcoal wood. That's all we can burn in our new training facility is wood and wood products. You can't burn anything that's pregnant.
No good tire fires or anything like that anymore?
It's nasty whiskey.
We will not be burning tires.
Okay. Mr. Huddleston, did he sneak out?
No.
Ah, he's back. Mr. Huddleston, I got two questions for you. One of them is, you're saying that the new road, the little blue road has disappeared from our screen here, but the road that you drew on there, if that's opened up when they open this facility for operational use, the road that's currently Asbury back there, that they're going to be using for their construction entrance primarily until they get operational, will that be turned into an emergency road or will that be a service road? Because I've heard it mentioned as a service road earlier tonight, and I think there's a significant difference.
Sure. The Asbury Road is a public road. There are other individuals that rely on it. I think there's a billboard. It actually touches the Dismuke Farm. And so that, the Dismuke Farm, which is immediately west, has a right to continue to use Asbury Road for its purposes. And so it will stay a public road, in my estimation, in the foreseeable future. For Sazerac, we have suggested that it does need to stay as a secondary point of access in the event you need it for those types of unforeseen emergencies.
And, but that would be only accessible through a Yelp gate or something like that onto their property?
It's more than likely it would be a-
Once we got to the part that people would be coming to visit the facility,
That's correct.
they would not be using Asbury.
Yes, and I think that's in there.
So we're not going to have a confusion of people-
Going on Asbury. This would be addressed off of a different public street.
Yeah, okay.
And there's some street naming that we'll have to go through to do that. The addresses will be figured out and assigned with site plan and building permit application. But the addressing for this facility will be off of our new public street. One of those, however that gets named, and we've got some work to do on that with our planning staff as well as the property owners.
And this may be my last question. The body of water that's currently there, which was a rock quarry that filled with water, it's been referred to as a lake. Is it technically a lake or is it just a body of water?
So I would refer to it as a surface water representation of groundwater. And because we took the land off of it, the rock, we now have exposed the permanent water surface, the general groundwater table. Regionally, we've exposed that at that level. I'm not enough of a definitions person to know the exact definition of a lake. But what I will say is that what we see there is a representation of what's going on underground. Because we now have removed the material on top of it, we can actually see that. And because we made it bigger, it actually has a wide spot to accumulate. And there's reference that it's spring fed, and that's certainly true. It probably doesn't remove, it doesn't receive much surface runoff from this property directly into it. But it is a-
My point, the water's not going to run up to that lake.
That's correct.
Okay, I got you on that. The water that's there, is it protected by the EPA? I guess is what I'm ultimately getting at here.
And in the state of Tennessee, the state of Tennessee has a definition for waters of the state. And when quarries are initially installed by the, installed by the original property owner, they're permitted that way. But once that property transfers, then the state's going to see this as a water of the state, in my opinion. And withdrawals and discharges into it would require appropriate state permits.
And the water, you said part of the reason that you're looking at that is because of the low in iron? And I was kind of under the impression, just from other discussions, that that was, that the water was going to be used mainly to cool pipes and things like that? Which, is that why it's important for it to be low in iron or is because it's good for putting in there to drink?
So our main purpose, what we plan to use it for mainly is what we call non-contact processing water, which means that in our distilling process, there's times when we need to cool things down. So we will extract the water from the lake, but it does not actually make contact with our product. So if you imagine like a tube and then you have another tube, inside this tube would be our product and the outside tube would be the water from the lake cooling it down. And in that process, it will heat back up and which will put it back into what we call a cooling tower essentially. And TDEC will give us parameters of, you know, how far we have to cool that water down before it's safe to put it back in the lake. So it's not like our product, anything in our process or our product will be discharged back into the lake. We're just simply extracting the water out, using it to cool down and then putting it back. Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, I think there was a question about the, you know, how it would impact wildlife and things like that that would be, you know, impacted by the aquifers, I guess whatever you call that, into the next spring over?
Yeah, and that's why we have the permit that we'll have with TDEC. And that's why they regulate that, because we don't want to put it back in too hot because that could affect things like that. So we're held accountable by the state on how we cool that down before we discharge it back into the lake.
So just as a related question that may not even be related, but I'm not smart enough to know. We heard on the news a year or so ago about some fines and things at a couple of the, you know, like Jack Daniels, I think, had one, and maybe some, another one of the bigger distilleries had some fines for putting something in the water? That's not this?
No, no. And I can't speak on their behalf because I wasn't, I don't work for those companies. I don't know exactly what happened. I probably read the same article you did where I think that-
They had some broken-
-it was quality to like test equipment. And eventually, there really wasn't a perceived problem, is what I got out of the article. But like I said, I can't speak on behalf of those companies. But what I can tell you is what we're doing is considered non-contact. And we will be held accountable by the state for what we do.
So you're using it for the worm in the thumper?
We use it for what?
The worm in the thumper? Is that the terms they use? That little wire, that copper pipe that runs through is the worm in the water?
She doesn't need to watch Moonshiners.
I don't watch Moonshiners.
I should have stopped.
I have one more question for you.
Sure.
At your other locations, have you all ever power washed the homes that were damaged by any of the fungus or mold?
No. I will, I will say that myself, I'm one of the distillers, John Lund, who's here tonight. He is a master distiller for Sazerac. And the two of us will be responsible for this facility. We will be on site on a daily basis. Between the two of us, we have over twenty-eight years' experience in the distilling industry. And I will say that Sazerac will be held, we will be responsible for our actions. I can say that. Like, and we are open, John and I being on site every day, we're open to any neighbors, community members coming to us with concerns. We're more than happy to talk to them as we're here. We're in this for the long haul. This is our career. Me personally, I'm really invested in Murfreesboro. My family, between my grandfather, my father, and my brother, they have five degrees from MTSU. So I want to see Murfreesboro succeed and grow just as much as you guys do. And we want what's best for the city and we do want to be good neighbors. So we, John and I both will always be available to talk about any concerns that arise in the future.
Okay. So if you're going to be willing to be good neighbors and talk to them, let's say it's a big fungus problem out there with the homes just getting all messed up. Will you all entertain possibly paying to have the homes pressure washed and everything?
I think, I mean, I think that's for future discussions. I can't really speculate on what we would do in a future situation. But I can sit here and promise that Sazerac will be open to sitting down and working with the neighbors.
Any questions for the APK?
Let me just provide a little additional information on Mr. LaLance's question. This facility will have access to city of Murfreesboro sewer. All their processed waters will be discharged and treated by the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. And the difference between that and the articles you read, the articles you read about, those facilities had direct discharge permits to state waters. And so they were covered under a broader, higher level of permitting. This applicant will need to comply with the city's pretreatment standards and all of that. But it will be treated by our treatment plan and then discharged with our other wastewater.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the APK?
Oh, one other thing on my list, too. We heard a little bit of a variance, the difference between the number of trips we expect visitors. I think I heard twenty thousand from one person, then all of a sudden, that number was fifty thousand?
I think the difference in that is between the first couple of years that it's open and ten years down the road. There's just a projection out from the time. Obviously, the day one this opens, it's not going to have the name recognition. It's not going to have the same drawl. Obviously, several years from now, we would anticipate that number to grow significantly.
All right, we need to consider for passage on first reading ordinance 180Z-08 to zone an area along Asbury Road is planned in development, PUD District simultaneous with annexation 2017-449.
We're, I'm going to get this out here just so everybody in the audience can kind of understand this and sort of get, you know, for however many months we've been dealing with this, I've kind of had three things on my list since I learned at least enough to have three things on my list. One of them was that the road was a prerequisite for me, that I didn't think it was appropriate for some undetermined amount of time to be there, you know, and maybe it's ten years, maybe it's two years. I think we've answered that one. I'm satisfied with the road situation, the fact that we've attached that to it, that it doesn't kill people or hurt people. I mean, that's obviously a big one and would be a no-brainer as a no. I'm comfortable with that based on not only what we've heard here tonight, but just so you guys in the audience know. I mean, I think probably a lot of us have done a lot of extra work on this and tried to read articles. And I'll just apologize for not being able to reply to everybody in the last forty-eight hours, but it was basically impossible. But, you know, we've been working on this for a long time. I mean, I've got friends who have worked at Jack Daniels for dozens of years. And I've, you know, called them to talk to them about it and ask them their thoughts on it and tried to learn about this kind of stuff. And I don't, I'm convinced that it does not, that there's not a health hazard with it. So the road, the health hazard, and now are your houses all going to turn black six months from now? I think I'm pretty close to having an opinion on that personally. I mean, just for me, I'll drive to Lynchburg in the next week. If we can, if you can give me that or whatever to try to, you know, to get this onto a vote. We've also had a lot of information here and it's late. And if anybody would be with me on kind of table in this until next week's meeting, that'd give me a little time to, and I know it's not, you know, I mean, here's the process with that, and I'll tell you guys, this goes for the neighbors too. Dr. Pringle has her opinion and there is no, you know, apparently no scientific proof or no way to determine it. You know, I, when it swims like a fish and is, looks like a fish, it's probably a fish. And so I'm going to take that and I'm going to go down there to Lynchburg and I'm going to get away from some of those buildings and I'm going to see if it's there a distance away from those houses or those warehouses. It's pretty simple to me. If it's, you know, I don't know with the pictures that we've seen tonight, how far away are those from the warehouses? How many warehouses were there? You know, if there's fifteen warehouses that are twice as big as these and that's fifty yards away, that's not really the same as four warehouses that's four hundred yards away from the closest house. And so if I can find a place that looks pretty similar and I get over there and it's, I don't see any evidence that there's a bunch of black all over trees and cars and houses and buildings and fences two hundred yards away and it's twice as many warehouse barrels, I'm probably going to be satisfied that it's not going to paint y'all's houses black with mold. Now, look, y'all, I mean, it's, this is a tough deal and y'all need to know, man, we take all this stuff pretty seriously. We've tried to do a lot of due diligence on this. And all we can do is the best we can do with the information that we're given. And the fact that, you know, a lot of times when these kinds of things come up, when there are answers for questions like, hey, the road's actually going to get built, it feels a little negative because you go, dang, that's probably going to make it happen. But it's really a positive because it's not going to be running through your neighborhood. And so these answers that we've gotten tonight, many of which I think are pretty positive as it relates to the amount of work we've put into trying to make sure the road's going to get there before this thing opens and all those kinds of things. I mean, it's been a bunch of work and there, you know, as you guys have all noted, there's a lot of positives to this that we also have to consider for, you know, the whole city. And so I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying and I'm rassling, really. It's a lot of information has been thrown out tonight. A concern I have is when you say, "We're going to do this, we're going to do this." With the world today, I'm going to need to see some things in writing. I mean, if you're going to say, you know, because something could come up and then we say, hey, on April the twelfth, you promised you were going to do this and do this. Specifics, and I don't know what they're going to be right now because I have so many things in my mind. Some of my concerns, I'm going to want to see in writing that this is going to be done, whatever it is. I'm just, I'm just rassling with my spirit right now. And you're going to go to Lynchburg, I'm going to get somebody to drive me to Kentucky, to the places in Kentucky. I just want to look at all the locations, just so to see. Because you all, it's hard to sit up here and hear all this and digest it and then be expected to vote on it right now. I just got to pray about it, I'm just telling you. And I got to go and see some of the locations. So with that, Mr. LaLance, go ahead.
You know, we understand that you're struggling with this. It's not an easy decision. We obviously want you to be at peace yourself. We are fine with a deferral until next week. And so-
And I don't think we're going to be meeting next week.
Unknown at this time.
Yeah, but-
One or two weeks, so.
One or two weeks.
That's fine, yes.
So is that something, would y'all voluntarily defer?
Sure. We'll voluntarily ask for a deferral. We've got no issue with that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think that'll give the public an opportunity who got three minutes to speak and five in some cases. But there's been comments made and questions hopefully answered since you made your comments. And that'll allow you to get back in touch with us for the next week or so when if there's any other concerns, we'll get one more chance at making sure that we try and get it right, so. when if there's any other concerns, we'll get one more chance at making sure that we try and get it right, so.
Now, Mr. Tindall, I'm just going to, one second. If we, if the, we've already had the public hearing, so, but if the plan, if something on the plan changes, is it possible to suspend the rules and open up for public comment again?
Well, if something on the plans, something material on the plans change, I think we would have to have a public hearing. If nothing on that changes, I think we've had the public hearing. And what we'd be deferring is only the consideration of passage of the ordinance. But, you know, nothing could change on the plan.
But as far as council members, if we go, if we're going to road trip to a few places, there's not, the public hearing would not be opened up unless we asked, we wanted to speak, if we wanted to hear from a couple of individuals.
You'd always have the prerogative to do that.
Yes, okay. So we would have a prerogative to be able to, right.
In my mind, I just got to clarify one thing. They were concerned about the roads. They were concerned about the fungus. And wasn't it another thing that they were concerned about?
It was traffic, road, traffic, road, whiskey fungus. What was that last?
I was thinking it was three things.
Health.
Health.
Health, yeah. It was sort of a hard...
Health and time, like time of the...
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we're going to accept the deferral from the applicant. We will make sure with the residents, you know, we live in the same community where y'all live. The last thing that we want to do is make a decision where we have, as Ricky said before, we're hiding behind different aisles in the grocery store when we see y'all. That's not what we strive to do. But, you know, we're going to be transparent and open and make sure that the information that we get, that we, you know, make the best decision with the information that we've got. So I will say, this is the, you know, I've sat on many planning commission meetings where we've gone to 11, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning. This has been the longest in a long time for a council public hearing. So I want y'all to know, we appreciate the way that everyone's handled themselves. We understand that when you deal with property and you deal with people's children, those are very personal things to deal with and we get that. So I want to thank y'all for how you've handled yourself and we're going to do the same thing as we move forward this process. So with that, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. Y'all are welcome to stay and finish the meeting if you'd like. But this will give us time for a quick little break and then we'll get back to the rest of our agenda. So five minutes, please.
And I welcome you to send me your comments from tonight's meeting. They moving this?
All right. We are starting back up. We have several recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first recommendation of the planning commission is with regards to the mandatory referral for right-of-way abandonment of a segment of Warrior Drive. And this is the segment of Warrior Drive that is west of New Salem Highway. It's actually the western terminus of Warrior Drive. And we can put the exhibit on the television screens. It's the area colored in light blue on the map before you. Back when Warrior Drive was originally platted, this section of Warrior Drive back in 2009, the Warrior Drive was curved to the south and west. And now, as the current developer, who is different from the original developer, has gone back and is master planning the development of this tract, he now, the master plan now calls for Warrior Drive to curve up and run parallel to the river. In its current alignment, it actually goes, dips down and goes closer to the river, limiting the depth of the building envelopes, particularly for the adjacent lots that you see on the screen. So the applicant, in advance of the development of these properties, has asked for the abandonment of this segment of Warrior Drive. And then with construction, he would realign Warrior Drive to the north and would dedicate new right-of-way to replace the existing right-of-way of Warrior Drive. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this right-of-way abandonment, as it does all right-of-way abandonments, and recommended at its meeting in early April unanimously to approve the abandonment of the right-of-way and to forward a recommendation of approval onto the city council. That recommendation was made subject to the applicant providing the city legal department any necessary documentation to prepare the quitclaim deed and the applicant recording the quitclaim deed, a plat depicting the abandonment and relocation of the subject property being recorded and utility easements being dedicated as needed to accommodate any existing utilities, including water and sewer mains. And planning commission and planning staff would recommend approval of this mandatory referral request subject to the aforementioned conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions. No public hearing is required at the council level.
Any questions for this right-of-way abandonment?
There aren't any, can I move for approval?
Sure.
I did.
We have a motion.
Second. Mr. Wade.
Mr. Wade, second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Ballmer.
We have three public hearings to schedule, all of which were conducted by the planning commission on April the 4th. Item A is a zoning amendment for the Salem Creek Commons, PCD. Item B, zoning request to RD along Cersei Street. And item C, a zoning request along North Maple Street to PRD. Items A and C were recommended for approval by the planning commission and item B was recommended for denial by the planning commission. All three items need to be scheduled for a public hearing and staff would recommend May 10th for that public hearing if it pleases the council.
Can you tell me the dates again?
May 10th.
May 10th.
So move for May 10th, public hearing.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you.
We'll now consider recommendations of the transportation director regarding a contract with HDR Inc. for final design and construction services for the new transit facility. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Since its inception in 2007, City of Murfreesboro Public Transportation System Road has had its maintenance and supervisory offices located on Florence Road at the city's public works facility and a spare portion of the solid waste building. This facility is remotely located from the transit customer base and is not convenient for public access and use. Over the last several years, city staff has been working to obtain a new centralized site and ultimately a new building that would better accommodate public transit operations with a focus on customer convenience and operational efficiency. This particular project will utilize federal transit administration funds and T.DOT Improve Act funds. As such, the project must be conducted in accordance with federal regulation and guidelines. The first phase of the project was completed in 2011, where the city undertook formulation of a transit facility needs assessment and location study. Through a matrix evaluation process, the nine sites were reduced to one, which ultimately resulted in selection of a locally preferred alternative. The preferred location combines parcels located on West Bain Street across from the street department. In October 2012, city issued a request for proposals to begin the next phase of the project, which was the preliminary engineering and environmental phase. The phase of this project was completed in June of 2017. Out of that study, the anticipated facility would include approximately 8,400 square feet of space on the bottom floor, in addition to 4,300 square feet of expansion on second floor, 17 bus bays with covered waiting areas, staff parking for approximately 30 vehicles with a bus wash bay. After conclusion of the transit preliminary design environmental study, city staff issued another RFP in accordance with the Brooks Act to begin the next phase of the process, which is final design and construction administration. Out of the two proposals received, the city consultant evaluation committee ultimately selected HDR Inc. as the preferred firm to carry out this phase of work. The negotiated value of the proposed contract between the city and HDR is a time and material contract not to exceed $1,596,211.44. The primary funding is provided through existing FTA federal grant utilizing Section 5307 funds that provide 80% of the project cost. The Tennessee Department of Transportation will provide 10% match and the city will provide the remaining 10%. The city's match is provided in the 2018-2022 capital improvement plan. And the specific breakdown of the funding is local match will be $159,621.22, state match $159,621.22, and federal match will be $1,276,969. I'd also like to note that the city has received two $3 million T.DOT Improve Act grants, which I will be bringing one of those to you guys probably the next meeting. So with that being said, I would recommend approval of the contract and available to answer any questions.
No, here, no questions, I move for approval.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director professional service agreement with Reagan Smith Associates to prepare the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Good evening, good night. Murfreesboro 2035 includes the following recommendation. It is critical that the Parks and Recreation Department develop a Parks and Recreation Master Plan in order to ensure the continued improvement and development of park facilities and services for a planning horizon of generally 20 years. The master plan will provide a guide for officials making decisions on recreational needs and for citizens interested in the city's commitment to the provision of recreational services. Earlier this year, we issued a request for qualifications to identify a consultant or a team of consultants to prepare that plan. The plan will provide a long-range, excuse me, a long-range vision for parks, recreation, open spaces, and trails. The plan will include research, public involvement, and the development of recommendations for all functions of the Parks and Recreation Department. The team selected through that process is Reagan Smith Associates and includes Equinox Environmental, Randall Gross Development Economics, and Griggs and Maloney Incorporated. The scope for the work for the master plan for the Parks and Recreation facilities and program is included in your agreement as attached. The fee includes a lump sum basis of $132,000. In our operating budget, we plan for $135,000 and expenditures will span both this fiscal year and next in that piece. Mr. Randy Caldwell from Reagan Smith is here as well, and he and I would welcome any questions.
I got a question, why did you show up at 7:00?
Angela, I'm going to ask the same question I asked at the Parks and Recreation meeting, so I know you know the answer to it, but I think it's important that the public understand because we just did the 2035 view of Parks and Recreation. And how is this different than that 2035 study?
The Murfreesboro 2035 provides that big vision for all of Murfreesboro. This plan is really going to get into the specifics, provide details to help us moving forward. This is going to be something that is dealing, of course, with the vision as well and tying those in. Some of the things that were identified, really fleshing those out, really moving forward so that we have actionable, realistic, practical action items going forward.
There's no other questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consider recommendations of the fire and rescue chief approval of prepayment in bed for purchase of two heavy rescue trucks. Chief.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is for the approval of two heavy rescue trucks. The only two things that are kind of odd about this request or that are different than we have had in the past is we're purchasing two heavy rescues. We had originally budgeted $1.2 million in the CIP to purchase a heavy rescue truck. We actually downsized that heavy rescue truck because we're going to locate it in Station 1 up here on Vine Street when we move Engine 1 out to go to Station 11. And that was the, kind of in our master plan now as far as the allotment of stations when we opened the Blackman Station on Blaze Drive, that we would move the engine out of that station and put a heavy rescue there. We're going to utilize the personnel from the two medium rescues, Rescue 2 and Rescue 8, to staff that truck. And so, but within this downsizing, it decreased the cost of it significantly. We're also asking you to approve a 90% prepayment of this truck. We did an 80% prepayment on the daryoladder that we purchased from Sutton. And that's common practice in fire apparatus industry of those type of prepayments. But because of the downsizing of the truck and because of the prepayment, we were able to acquire two rescue apparatus within the $1.2 million approved in CIP. The need for the other is to have a reserve rescue truck that has the heavy capabilities to back up the three heavy rescue, or the three heavy rescue trucks that we'll have in frontline service. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on the purchase of the heavy rescue trucks?
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thanks, chief. We'll now consider for adoption...
Thank you for what you did for Ivan.
Thank you. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 18R-06 requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to skip water?
Just for a second.
Well, I'll be glad to discuss item number 6, please. We do this periodically to reclaim property funds that we send to the state of Tennessee. And after they've had it for 18 months, we can have those funds returned to us and we will have them on hand if anyone claims them, but we'll hold them instead of the state holding.
And we do this yearly, correct?
We do.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second. Oh, I can't make it.
You've been wanting to do that for four years, man.
And you have four more years to do it, that's the thing.
Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the water resources board. Mr. Kerr.
I'm surprised I wasn't, Ms. Georgia didn't put me last anyway. I'm tempted to just ask, are there any questions? Pull the can honey cut.
No, no, there aren't.
First item, requesting your approval to put out for advertisement a request for competitive sealed proposals on a procurement for a BioSolids thermal dryer. The reason I'm asking for approval is 45% of this is weighted as cost. The remaining criteria, there's such things as the technical needs, the safety experience of the firm, and financial strength of the firm. So this is a combination of skills and abilities as well as price. So I would just ask for your approval to advertise that request for competitive sealed proposals.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, which is a couple of components to item two. We did just take renovation bids for Murfreesboro Water Resource Administrative Building. Low bid was $990,000. We had $850,000 budgeted. We do have the reserve funds to make up the difference. This does put us at about $125 a square foot for the reno. But the primary purpose is to get our customer service clerks in a more secure and safe environment, similar to what tax and finance has done with the bulletproof glass. And we've had to widen that particular area. So in conjunction with that bid, we do have to lease a mobile bank facility. It's roughly $38,000. It's a six-month lease, also has exterior bulletproof glass. We'll be putting, our drive-through will continue to be... We'll be putting, our drive-through will continue to be accessible. It has a drive-through window. The cashiers and the clerks will be in that facility while the renovations take place. We hope it's about a six-month project. Be happy to answer any questions.
No for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have several beer permits in front of you.
There are.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
We have a special event permit for Murfreesboro Center of the Arts for an April 14th event. Oakland's Association has turned in a variety of events coming up for them through the calendar year of 2018. Also a special event permit. Both of those are in order, and we would issue the permits upon your approval. We have a catering permit for a new restaurant in town at 352 West Northfield Suite 4F. That application is in order, and we would issue that permit upon your approval. We have a retail onsite and offsite permit request for a market at 1622 Bradable Pike. I understand they're gonna have a place there to eat and consume their beer. That application is still lacking their building codes inspection, so other than that, it is in order. And if you approve it, we would not issue that until they finish their building codes inspections. We have an offsite application for our market at 2975 South Rutherford Suite B. It also needs to finish their building codes inspections, but the rest of that application is in order. We have an on-premise request for the new movie theater at 1706 O'Fort Parkway. They also need to finish up their building codes inspections, but otherwise, that application is in order. We have an on-premise application for 1722 South Rutherford Boulevard, which is a restaurant. That application is in order, other than finishing their building codes inspections. And finally, we have a restaurant at 211 West Main Street that wants to have an on-premise location, on-premise permit, that also needs to finish their building codes inspection. So for those, we would not issue the permit until you have approved it and they have completed those inspections. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
If no questions, I move for approval. Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements that need to be paid?
Not tonight.
I have one item under, under other businesses. Anyone have anything else? I wanted to give you an update and really ask for a motion finalized, was it this morning, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Finalized this morning, our school site, that, the, the number one site that the school board had picked. Just to walk you through how it did that, or how, how we did that, the site that we were looking at on the corner of St. Andrews and Veterans Parkway, it was the site that initially all came back as the number one site. The group did not want to sell the site, so we moved and got Site 2 further down, closer to Barfield. That site, we got initial thought on what the price was gonna be, but then it had significant development challenges on cost, not only that, but then some blue line stream issues. Looking at what we were gonna pay for the site on the Barfield area, that then started the conversations with this other group. So with that being said, we got an appraisal. They didn't agree with the appraisal we got. They got an appraisal. And so what we have come up with is that we will go with their appraise price, which that number is $64,000 per acre. And then we have agreed upon a price above that for them to agree to a friendly condemnation. That price still would be less than what we would have to pay for the less desirable site and what we were gonna have to pay to develop that site. So we still end up with the primo, the site that everyone wanted, and we're still gonna be less than our second option. So that second site would be, depending upon the total acreage, another, for legal expense, time, development, another $16,000 an acre is what the total would be. And we'd like to put it that way to make sure that, that holds property values in the area on what appraised value is, not on what additional funds would be on what we would've paid for development. And they've agreed to do a friendly condemnation, so that way, it gives them some tax benefits, and we don't have to go through the condemnation process. With that, there were a couple of small things that the owners wanted to, to ask, and I've already talked to Dr. Gilbert, but one of that would be the Leathers family who did on that property, that we would find a way to name one of the streets going into the school after the owners of that property. Other than that, it's working with the city on, on future zoning on the additional acreage. So I think it turned out for a win-win, but we need a motion if everyone agrees to let legal do what they need to do, because after talking with Dr. Gilbert this morning, we need to get started yesterday on getting the school ready for next, for next, the next year. No questions, I move for approval. Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright. Mr. Councilman Shacklet.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business from staff or the city council?
Thank y'all for putting in a long evening.
All right, with that, we stand adjourned.